Okay. All right. Thank you. I bring today's meeting of the Westboro Select Board to order, it being Tuesday, February 27th, here in the Forbes Municipal Building and being 6:15. If you are so able, please join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. And we open each meeting with open forum. I believe we have someone here for open forum this evening. If you would come forward. Name and address. And as part of open forum, we provide three minutes for whatever you may wish to discuss. Oh, pardon, yes. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed by Westboro TV. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Good evening, Select Board. My name is Erfan Beg and I live at 216 East Main Street, Westboro, Mass. I came here to urge for resolution for ceasefire in the current conflict of Israel and Palestine. I mourn the loss of all the individuals on both sides and I, as well as I mourn the captivity of hostages on both sides. Tens and thousands of lives have been taken away in this senseless act of violence, mostly women and children. People are dying out of hunger and thirst. Nobody should be deprived of basic necessities of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies. I mean, I have no words, but I didn't come prepared. The situation is getting worst and worst every single day. In my culture, I was taught that if you see something wrong, you stop by your hand. And if you're not that powerful to take that decision, you speak out against it. And even if you cannot do that, that you cannot speak out against it because you're not that powerful, then you feel bad in your heart that something wrong is happening, and that's the least that you could do. I come here taking the second option of speaking out against the wrong things. As you can see, a young man like Aaron who set himself ablaze, as it was in the news last few days, just to bring the message to President Biden about the situation that's happening in Middle East. I hope and pray that the board here takes an informed decision of calling for a ceasefire on the basis of just humanitarian grounds. I do understand the job of the town and the Select Board is to address the local municipal issues, but we are always taught that everything starts locally. You have to act locally and think globally. I believe in Westboro Town. They have always recognized and helped the humanitarian crisis, and I hope and pray that the board takes an informed decision of calling for ceasefire just on the basis of humanity. Thank you.
Thank you for coming here today. With that, we move on to our next item on the agenda. It is the concurrence of the Town Manager appointment of Barbara Walls as Treasurer/Collector.
So Barbara's joining us on Zoom. So Barbara, if you're there and you want to come on screen, if you're able. So as the board's aware, we've had, the Treasurer/Collector position has been vacant for a long period of time. And so we were really fortunate to have Barbara Walls apply for the position. She has served for 22 years as a Treasurer/Collector in another community in Massachusetts. And so we are excited to see her come on board. You all have her resume in your packets. The appointment and your concurrence would become effective on March 11th, which would be her first day.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
The resume speaks for itself.
Yeah. Barbara would like to say a few words.
Oh, there we go.
Yep, there you go.
Hi. I want to thank Jonathan, Kristen, and Christine, Kim, for interviewing me and giving me the opportunity to work with the town of Westboro. I am looking forward to being part of the team.
Barbara, thank you very much.
Yep.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Look forward to you starting.
And to actually seeing her.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know what happened to the video screen. I can't get a picture.
Quite all right. Quite all right.
I'll move to concur with the Town Manager's appointment of Barbara Walls to serve as Treasurer/Collector beginning March 11th, 2024, for a term to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Five to zero. Barbara, thank you very much. Yes, and as Shelby said, we look forward to seeing you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes. Yes. Enjoy time off.
Not yet.
Almost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, 2024 Elections Discussion with...
Can I make a comment before?
Sure.
Great. So I thank you, Mr. Chair, for seeing that this item was placed on our agenda. I asked it to be on this agenda. We unfortunately live in a very charged political environment. I think we're all well aware of that. And as such, I thought it was important for the public and certainly this board to understand the measures the town is taking to ensure voter safety, poll worker safety, and staff safety, as well as voting integrity throughout the election period, both early and during the presidential later this year. I requested that our town clerk and chiefs of police and fire come to speak with the board and through us to the public about their respective departments' plans around this matter, and certainly for the board to ask any questions or address any concerns. So, thank you, and thank you for coming tonight.
All right. Let's start with Deb. Or you can all come up. Thank you very much.
Oh, they can slide one up. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. Please, Deb, if you want to start. Thank you.
So I guess I can speak to this as far as the town clerk's office. We follow state law for all our election procedures. At all times, our ballots are secure. They're locked up in our office as well as, you know, in Town Hall. Election Day, the ballots are transported to the high school by police officers along with our election media. We have two police officers present, one inside the polling location, as we're required to do by law. Our police chief is great in working with us. We'll have another officer upstairs. The poll workers will get briefed, you know, in the morning as far as what happens in the polling location. Again, there are state guidelines that I am supposed to follow as far as locking ballots, tracking ballot cases if we were to have to leave the building, securing our election equipment, poll pads, scanner tops. And also, if we're to be out of high school for more than an hour, we need to go someplace else. So I do have an alternative location. I need to discuss it with the board and with Christie, but it would, you know, most likely be someplace like the Senior Center. Alm is aware. If something were to happen, we would be looking at a location such as that with the help of the DPW to securely move the equipment and the ballots, of course, with the police at all times watching the ballots, and again, our election media, which is loaded into our scanners.
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Todd Monarty, excuse me, Todd Monarty, Police Chief. Yeah, I've met, we've had discussions with the town clerk. This isn't something new to us. We're supplying two police officers for the duration of the event. They'll meet at Town Hall, transport the equipment that's supposed to be transported under police protection. They'll be at the polling place throughout the event and transport the equipment back. As Deb said, there's two officers. One will be outside. All the officers on duty during the polling times will be directed to do random patrols of the parking lot and surrounding areas of the high school. Detailed directions will be given to all officers that are working as to the rules and regulations. And myself and my command staff, we make in periodic visits to the polling location to make sure that everything's running smoothly.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Patrick Purcell, serving as Fire Chief. With respect to Fire, EMS, and Public Safety Communications, we would traditionally brief our crews at roll call in the morning, establish our state of readiness for the day, and just make the crews aware of any, like we would for any large-scale event. Obviously, these would be for both election days as well as upcoming town meeting. And then we would not be on site, but we would be prepared to respond if there was some type of an incident, and we would manage that within our own capability. And if it exceeded what our operational capability was, we would declare a mass casualty incident and request the resources necessary to respond. Just, if I could comment, did you probably get a report from us today that the three of us submitted? That is real-time information that was obtained from the Commonwealth's Fusion Center. There is a statewide report that's supposed to be coming out today, I believe, or tonight. Obviously, if there's any change, we would notify you of that, but as of right now, there is no credible threat for any type of safety issue here in Westboro at all.
Thank you very much. Yes, and I think in support of what you said, sort of, I guess there's potential for, during certain periods of town meeting, that there may be more individuals than we typically have at town meeting. Is that a fair way of saying that? Like, there's a potential that the crowd at town meeting would swell, I guess. And so that, at that point, you would react as necessary to the numbers within potentially the auditorium and gymnasium.
Yeah. So as always, we always have a detail officer at town meeting as well. Obviously, I'll be there. If I see anything going awry, we'll be calling in on-duty staff to assist. And if it gets beyond that, you know, obviously, we'd be calling in mutual aid as well.
Yeah, and certainly hopefully for town meetings, you know, not the case, but overflow into the gymnasium, obviously, would, you'd prepare accordingly. So, thank you. And thank you for coming tonight. I mean, I really, I have full confidence that there are plans behind the scenes. We don't need to know those details, but I think it's important that our elections here run smoothly. I know we'll hear from our town moderator later about town meeting, and we expect that to run smoothly as well, and, you know, in the spirit of what we call that thing, democracy.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, if I can. So first of all, I want to thank Member Marshall for bringing this, putting, getting this on the agenda. I think it is an important topic for the town to understand, and I certainly appreciate the two chiefs and Deb, you coming tonight to share with us what the plan is. I guess, Deb, I did have one question for you. Thank you for kind of giving that overview. Is there anything that you can share with us in regards to after the election, how the ballots are secured and provided, the information up to the state level? How are we, how is that managed as well?
So after polls close, our tabulators come in at night. Everything is transparent. There's always a guardrail outside of each precinct. People can watch what's going on within the precinct. Zero totals are hung, totals of the day. The, behind this, you know, after the election wrap-up happens, the police officer is there the whole time inside the precinct. Each warden goes to each ballot box. The ballot boxes are emptied. Ballots, handwritten ballots, hand counts are laid out. They're tabulated. When everything's done within the precinct, after the last voters have, you know, way before that, last voters have voted, the precincts are taken down. Things are loaded up, the poll pads, the media sticks that come out of the voting equipment, the ballots themselves brought back to Town Hall with the police officers. Everything's brought inside, and that's where myself, my assistant town clerk, start the post-election unofficial results that we need to get out to the press after, the same night as the election, unofficial results. At all times, the ballots remain locked in their cases. Those ballots stay, they can't be opened for 30 days because of recounts that could happen. After that, those ballot boxes are emptied, and they are stored for 22 months. I should say too, each ballot box is coded with a number that goes into the clerk book to track what ballots are in what cases, what precincts. That same procedure happens too. If we were to have to leave the high school and say a fire drill, people are voting ballots. There's a mechanism to watch out which ballots are there, and we're securing them. And that way also, notes always go into the clerk's record book.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that detail.
It's a good education. Thank you all very much for coming this evening. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is to adopt the Order of Layout for Ed Waters Way.
So you have, and I think Chris is here, so he can speak to it, but you've already begun this process, so you do have information in your packet. We originally also had information about Zara Drive, but that hadn't met all the requirements, so that actually is not for your approval tonight. So, Chris, do you want to?
I don't actually have anything to say. I just was here in case there were questions, so.
No, thank you. And this is really just the next step in a multi-step process in order for this to occur. And I see that, I'm looking for a volunteer, because the, the request is to read the entirety of the verbiage on the Order of Layout document for Ed Waters Way. So, do I have a volunteer?
It's actually pretty short, I think.
Oh, okay. The entire team was...
So the Order of Layout of Ed Waters Way, well, let me see. There's probably a motion I have to make, right? Yep. So, "The Order of Layout of Ed Waters Way. Whereas the Select Board of the Town of Westboro, acting pursuant to General Law Chapter 82, Sections 21 through 24, having deemed that common convenience and necessity require the acceptance of Ed Waters Way as a town way, hereby lays out Ed Waters Way as a public way as shown on the plan referenced below. And whereas the boundaries of the layout of Ed Waters Way are shown on a plan entitled 'Street Acceptance Plan of Land, Reservoir Estates, Ed Waters Way, Westboro, Massachusetts', dated September 10th, 2023, revised through December 20th, 2023, prepared by Gerrier and Halman, Inc., which plan was referred to the Planning Board and which plan is hereby adopted as a part of this order, and all land lying within the layout of Ed Waters Way is hereby laid out as a public way. The aforementioned plan is hereby forwarded to the town clerk for filing, and the foregoing layout is hereby reported to the town for acceptance, adopted February 27th, 2024."
Second. All right. Thank you.
Can I just add? So we just got the, and I did forward it to you just now, but we just got the letter from the Planning Board that just says that at their meeting on February 27th, they voted unanimously to recommend the layout of Ed Waters Way as shown.
I assume that was coming.
Got it. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor? Five to zero. Okay. Was that successful? That was what you were looking for?
Looks good to me. You said yes.
Confirming. It's a multi-step process. We don't want to mess up a step. Okay. So next item on the agenda is a Letter of Support for the Replacement of the MBTA Culverts. I don't know if there's discussion here.
So you have a draft letter. I think maybe there's a little bit of explanation there, but the bottom line is Derek recently coordinated a, a meeting for us onsite with a bunch of stakeholders, us from DPW, the Conservation Director, representative from the Division of Ecological Restoration, Keolis, which is the operator for MBTA, and an MBTA rep. We met onsite. There's some culverts out in Cedar Swamp that are under the railroad that aren't functioning properly. It's been that way for quite a while. And recently, we've gained some traction in getting support for replacing those culverts. The meeting seemed very productive. I, I don't know what that will result in, but we felt pretty confident that there was potential that these could be programmed for replacement soon. So we reached out, obviously, to the board. Some other local officials and also our state legislative delegation has agreed to provide a letter, which we hope we'll get next week. We will package all that, send that to the MBTA. And there's some deliberations that they have in March that, I don't know that decisions are made then, but the process starts for making decisions about work they're going to do in the upcoming year. And so we're hoping we can have some influence on getting the culverts here in Westboro on the priority list for replacement.
Excellent. Oh, that sounds terrific. Any questions? Thank you.
Yes, thanks for bringing it forward.
All right. So, yes.
So I would move to submit a letter of support to request replacement of MBTA culverts.
Second.
All those in favor? Five to zero. Okay.
Thank you.
And one, I guess you have, I don't know if there's any questions on the next one, but request to amend job description for the position of mechanic. I mean, since you're there, I guess. But this does seem very straightforward. I think it's the adjustment that we've, it's sort of creating consistency with the other job descriptions that were recently updated, right? It's specifically related to CDL licensing, and the requirement being that it be obtained within 12 months. Any questions or regarding this?
It is. I just, the one thing I want to point out, the last batch of job descriptions were a different grade position. There are other positions in the same grade level. This is the only position, though, for which we're seeking this adjustment. So right now, the job description requires the mechanic to possess the licensure at the time of hire. And having conversations, as Chris is working to recruit, the more critical skill set is the mechanic's skill set, and that's, we're having a challenging time finding a mechanic, let alone a mechanic who also possesses the CDL. So we're looking to amend the job description to provide a year to obtain the CDL. And I'd also like to, the version you have marked up in your packet, propose that they obtain a hoisting license within six months. We'd like to just set it at 12 months for both of those licenses.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm sorry, Kim, what were, what were the two licenses, CDL and?
The backhoe, front-end loader.
The hoisting license? Okay. Got it. Thank you. Yep.
All right. Quick motion? Yes, please.
I move to approve the amendments to the mechanic job description as presented.
Second. All right. All those in favor? Five to zero.
Now I'm done.
I think that's everything. Thank, thank you. Okay. All right. Next, we have the Community Center Update.
So related to the Community Center, just wanting to let the public know that we've been targeting a March 15th closing date. That's been moved. That was a Friday. We've moved, it's now moved to the Monday. So just to keep everybody up to date on that. Also, we presented the board, I think maybe two meetings ago, or the last meeting, I guess last meeting, with an RFQ for Architectural Services, in doing some additional, looking into what would be required of choosing an architect and moving forward with that process. And then understanding that it is likely that the project will meet that threshold where an OPM is required. We, we will need to go up for an OPM first. And so we do have funding between that article that we have already appropriated at the October Town Meeting, as well as through the Recreation Revolving Accounts. We believe that we could fund that, but just wanting to give the board an update on that. And we still feel that we can meet that timeline for the October Town Meeting process, so.
Christie, what's the threshold?
1.5 million.
And so the RFQ that we developed will meet the needs for the OPM, or that's a separate?
It's a separate, it would be a separate document for an RFP for OPM services, and then they would, we would use that document, the RFQ, as a basis for our next step, which would be to get the architect, but they would review it. There are a lot of criteria related to design selection, so we just want to make sure that upfront, we're meeting those needs.
Sure. And does, does that first element, because the board hasn't taken action on that, we took action on the RFQ, does that come to the board?
The OPM, for the OPM?
Yep.
We can bring that to the board, or you can delegate someone to just work with us so we can get it posted. Because that one, unlike the Architectural RFQ, doesn't have as much nuance to it, so.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would be great, just if a member of the board wants to work on that, that would be great. I'm not raising my hand.
I'll do it, if you want. Be happy to do it.
Okay. Super. Thanks again.
So moved. Oh, does it require a vote? I was kind of joking, but.
Might as well.
No. Favorite?
Yeah, it's just an update. Yep.
I did have one question, and I apologize if I'm a little bit behind, because I did miss a meeting or two in the last couple of months. I'm just, I'm not, are we, I'm assuming, but I want to make sure, reciprocal easement agreement's all done? Is that?
That's all part of your executive session tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, for the public, architect, bringing the architect in, that will kick off the public engagement.
Engagement.
Just so folks know, because we have been, I was, I did the bagels with the board this past weekend, and there was a couple of questions came about time, and why haven't we seen anything yet? And I was explaining the process, just so the public, they're asking, so it's good just to let them know.
It'll be good timing too, because the Planning Department is working on the downtown development plan, which has a level of public engagement, so similar to when we did the senior needs assessment and, I think, the master plan, we were just trying not to sort of confuse the two processes, so.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Next item is the Proposal of the Waste Management Program.
On. There we go. You got it. Thank you. So at your December meeting, the Waste Management Exploratory Committee, which was an ad hoc committee for the purpose of looking at different waste programs, came to you with some recommendations. They've been doing a lot of great work over the last probably two years, really just looking at different programs. And last year around this time, there was discussion about the fact that, that Harveys might not be available as a transportation drop-off anymore. And so when we found out that that was something that we could continue with, it sort of redirected them, and so they were able on December 5th to present you with their proposals. So these are the four programs, just for memory, these are the four programs that they considered. So the first is essentially status quo, so the same sort of program with the drop-off at transfer station. If any of someone is interested in having curbside, that's something that they would separately contract with. The second is status quo with this transfer station, but also adding curbside recycling, so that everyone in town's recycling may be picked up, but you would still have to bring your waste to the transfer station. Third is a full curbside program, also with the transfer station open. And then the last... And then the last, with Harvey's. And then the last one, option four, was to go out to bid and really explore different haulers, but understanding that that, if we were to go with someone other than Harvey's, that would require standing up some drop off locations, require some additional work related to waste banned items and things like that. So, but all of them, all four of them, were proposed to move forward with pay as you throw. And the reason that they wanted to move forward with pay as you throw is because that's been identified from the Department of Environmental Protection as really sort of the number one way to reduce waste, and that was really the goal of the Waste Management Exploratory Committee.
Christie, if I may, just, on, could you just comment on the pay as you throw on the private curbside, so there's no confusion at this point? So this is pay as you throw for, for the transfer station, but those using Tidy Town for curbside that, that, that could be, potentially be phased in?
Yeah, I mean, that's to be negotiated, so at this point, we're, we're not sure how that would impact.
Right, because, I mean, I think the board understands that's a private relationship that, so, but there may be potential opportunity there, so, that's all.
So, Waste Management Exploratory Committee recommended options two and four, which, if you go back here, that was the full curbside recycling, or the going out to bid for a full curbside. And so the board accepted that, those recommendations, or that presentation, and then we moved forward, myself, Jen Sullivan, our Public Health Director, Chris Pan, our DPW Director, Shelby Marshall is your representative, and then also Dr. Ehrlich as the Board of Health's representative, and we received quotes from Harvey's, and so discussed what we might want to recommend. So this is the timeline that the Waste Management Exploratory Committee had put up, so we're pretty close to that timeline, looking in February at the implementation. So once we received the quotes, this is, this is how the calculations played out, so for proposal number one, which is the status quo, there's two proposal number ones identified here, one is with single stream recycling, and one is without single stream recycling. Currently, the town doesn't pay for recycling. If we moved to single stream, the quote was $95 a ton, which is why you're seeing an increase if you moved to single stream versus not moving to single stream. So you can see at the bottom here what the budget for FY '25 is, that's based on an estimate that we would increase that budget, or that we should increase that budget by 3%, understanding that we only have annual contracts with Harvey's, and so we would have to negotiate that contract regardless of whether we made these changes or not. So if we went with the, without, no single stream recycling, but doing, just pay as you throw with the similar structure that we currently have, we would expect to reduce the budget by about $42,000. And that's, that's really related to looking at the number of tonnage, the tonnage that we expect to pay for. The quote that we got was $65 per ton, and we typically base our budget on 5,000 tons. Proposal number two was the recycling only, so that was an increase of about half a million dollars. And then proposal number three, with the town curbside contract with Harvey's, was an increase of about a million dollars, which is consistent with what we'd been hearing previously. We hadn't received quotes, but we had been hearing that it would likely be that, that much. And then proposal number four, we did not consider due to timing constraints, so the, to have to go out to bid, and then also to have to stand up those other facilities, we just didn't have the time in order to get all of that stood up. So, as I said, the recommended structure would be to just implement pay as you throw. It also gives us the ability to sort of do an incremental change with the community. So there would still be stickers required for drop off, that would really be, the purpose of that would, is really to prove your residency, because otherwise, anyone can purchase the bags and drop them off at the transfer station. And then you would, you would have to purchase bags. So we're proposing a dollar per bag for 15 gallon bags, and 30, 3 gallon bags would be $2 per bag. And so that would require us to go with a vendor who, who would work with us to develop, or to create the bags, and also place them in stores, and sort of create that financial mechanism that would allow us to, them to sell them, and the town to receive any additional revenue.
I would just add that, so the, there are state contracts for the bags and all, there's a very, pretty amazing program that sits behind the scenes that is ready to be stood up pretty quickly on that, so.
Are those bags, you used the word revenue, sorry, right now, is that cost?
Can you speak up, I'm sorry?
Sorry, are those bags, the word revenue was just used, I was just curious, are the cost per bag, $1, $2 per bag, is that the cost, that cost we're selling, proposing that those get sold to the community, or is there some portion of that that we expect to come back to the town as part of administering this program?
The latter, so some portion of it would be expected to come back to the town, yep.
And we would be able to track that, again, that's part of the whole system of how the monies come in and are tracked back to the town.
So anticipated results, as I mentioned, DEP identifies pay as you throw as a sort of optimal for waste reduction. They estimate that we would reduce our waste by 25 to 50%, so we pay per, per ton, and so that could result, depending on how we structure the program going forward, could result in a reduction in the budget. We're still basing our, our budget for FY '25 on the 5,000 tons, understanding that this is a new program, and we don't know exactly what that reduction would be. And then we also are eligible for a grant through DEP for implementing the program, it's $10, $10 per drop off user, and so that is, that's part of that implementation plan you saw in my timeline slide. So the board will be asked to identify exactly how we will implement the program. And so we've already drafted that plan, we're sort of refining that, we'll get it to you soon, and then the question, the request will be that it get approved on March 12th for submission to the state on March 15th, so that we'll be eligible for the grant.
I'm sorry, that, that, those monies, Christie, can be used for community education, right?
I believe so.
I believe we've even talked about potential if we needed to have some education on sites, that obviously would have to be negotiated with, with Harvey's to have a staff or someone on site to educate folks as to the nuances of the new program, so there's, there are different ways that money can be used for the grant.
Is there any limitations on that last bullet, as far as the revenue that's generated and the $200,000 from the bag, as far as what it could be used for, or is that, can be that people to put into any fund?
It's a general fund revenue.
General fund revenue, okay.
So the next steps, as I mentioned, would be to have the board approve that implementation plan, and then what I would recommend is that the select board identify someone to start working on negotiating that multi-year contract with Harvey's, and, and then ultimately, it would have to come back for, for approval. Currently, those negotiations happen with the Board of Health, they've been a partner in sort of how this would move forward. We want to keep moving it forward quickly, which is why I'm recommending that you designate someone to, to keep us moving with, with the multi-year contract, and there's many things, as we said, that need to be worked out. I was at the senior center earlier today talking about this, and one of the biggest concerns that was raised was how enforcement would work, and certainly, that's something that we would need to put into the contract. And then we would also have to do the pay as you throw bag vendor, as Shelby mentioned, that's on state contracts, so there's not really negotiation to be had there, there's three on state contracts, so just choosing one of the three. And then we would hold informational sessions in April and June, we actually also have secured a table at the Environmental Action Fair, which is March 16th, so that we can start talking about it at that event. And then one of the things that we've identified, or that Waste Management Exploratory Committee identified as really being a driver of our waste is food waste, and so while that's not contemplated to be part of this contract, we think that we would want to continue investigating that as a possible service that the town can either contract for or help coordinate for the community. Well, I have, I don't know, Shelby, you want to add anything?
Nope, I think you've covered it, I mean, let's board his questions.
Questions from any other members of the board?
Just again, because this has come up a lot, just to maybe, I'm going to try to summarize what I heard and make sure it's right for folks, or maybe keep saying it over and over, but basically, what this does is, pretty much everything stays the same, so Harvey's of the dump stays open, we have stickers, there'll be one-year stickers, and it will be non-single stream recycling, so recycling will stay exactly as it is today with separation for, for various things. The one difference will be, is pay as you throw, so basically, you can't just bring
White trash bags.
White trash bags, black trash bags, whatever, you have to use to pay as you throw, those will be, need to be purchased, and as you said, work through enforcement. But for folks that have curbside right now, pay for that, they can continue to pay for that. For those that use the dump and want to continue to use the dump, the only change for them is they'll have to purchase the bags, and that's what they'll use to dispose of at the.
That is correct. I think there, there are certainly a lot of details, and I've been asked those questions, one of my favorites was, well, if I have a guitar and I need to throw it away, and it won't fit in one of their bags, what do I do? So we will, as part of education, have to talk about kind of how that works, and some items will be, there will be a cost to dispose of them, but there's also the option of breaking that down and putting it into a bag. So some items can't be easily broken down, so understandably, but I think education will be a key part of this.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I guess, as I look at this, first of all, thank you very much for the work on this, it's, it's, it's super important to the town. I will just say that, just on my quick look into like the bag piece of it, I looked at four different towns, including one, Weston, which has a transfer station, the average bags for those four towns were $1.33 for the small bag and $2.56 for the large bag, so I'm glad to hear that we're looking at something that's a little more affordable. This topic really, and I'm supportive of, of the plan, but in regards to the contracting piece of it, you know, I, I break this down into a couple of simple buckets. One is we have an enforcement issue, and wanted to understand how to better enforce, because that's a big problem at the dump, is, and I, I think everybody could easily suspect that as the cause for the overages as compared to other communities. So I'm hopeful that we can somehow get into the contract something about, about the enforcement piece of it. The other piece of it is, you know, making more curbside options, I look at it as kind of being curbside and expanded curbside, and that kind of brings me to the, kind of how I visual, view how this contract should be, I, I think of it similar to how we contract with Verizon. We, 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 we contract with them to provide a service, or, you know, there's a service in the town, and they provide that. We don't get calls in the town, right, for my internet's down, or my phone line's down. So I'm hopeful that, that type of same logic will apply here, and that, that Harvey's would provide what options are available to us, and people can opt in to those pieces, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so let me, let me be clear, so there will be, there are no, in the path we're going forward at this time, there are no changes to curbside, so that relationship is completely private between the homeowner.
Yep.
And Harvey's, so there's, the town is not involved in any of that aspect of kind of the day to day.
Okay.
So, and, and so therefore, the pay as you throw piece presently would not be, it's, it's, I guess, I don't know whether or not we can include that in that, because that's a, it's not a relationship that the town manages. So just to be clear, if you are with Tidy Town, Harvey's for your curbside, nothing is changing at this point.
So this is providing more rigidity in around the actual transfer station?
It's improvements on the transfer station where there is the greatest freedom to kind of throw as you, go as you throw, throw as you go. And the pay as you throw, by, as Christie said, by DEP is, shows to significantly reduce waste.
Yep.
That's not to say that we wouldn't explore those other options in the future, but, you know, I think that certainly from a cost perspective, as we see in the numbers, we want to proceed thoughtfully about this, and not overly burden, you know, taxpayers and kind of, I would say, jump fully in the deep end.
And what do we see as being the likely term of a contract with?
I think that's part of the negotiation strategy, so I wouldn't get into, I think, what Christie has said is, you know, I'll call it multi-year.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, no, thank you both. Initially, this, oh.
Question, do we have a sense for the sticker? Since the sticker is really just resident validation, what's the price now, and what, do we have a sense of what it would be?
So the price now, I believe, is $85.
For two years.
For two years, and so part of what we're, so, so the sort of philosophy behind that number is that we're covering the operation of the transfer station, and so we want to make sure that we're continuing to do that. So we expect that that number would reduce, because it's just resident validation, but there's also questions about, you know, how many stickers folks should get per household, because we hear about, you know, the potential for, you know, the ability to get multiple can lead to other folks using, so I think we just need to look at that further, but we don't anticipate it to go up, and we are looking at it to be annual so that we can continually validate residence, residency.
I would also say, I think we have to run the numbers more completely to, you know, because what we don't want to do is, you know, penalize individuals that are using the transfer station, right, so, you know.
Right, no, no, I get that.
So we got to run the numbers.
We expect it's going to go down, we haven't finalized the numbers yet.
That's correct, and we want to make sure that there's not an impact to the budget.
Okay, sounds good. No, and I'm sorry, did I hear that initially, it's a one-year contract, and then further contracts are negotiated, or we're negotiating multi-year?
Multi-year, yep.
All right, I mean, I am definitely in favor of pay as you throw, you know, I think it makes a lot of sense, I think this distributes cost appropriately across users, so I'm appreciative of that. I, I think I'm also a little concerned about the implementation, how, how we're going to be able to ensure compliance, but I think that's something that, over time, we're just going to need to figure out, right? So, thank you, thank you very much for your work on this.
We'll be talking trash in the spring.
Excellent, excellent. Anything else from anybody?
Do we need to make a motion to, for someone to be appointed here? Shelby, are you interested?
As long as you don't label me trashy or something, I'm happy to continue.
I'll make a move, motion to move to appoint Shelby Marshall to represent the board on the negotiating team for a new waste contract.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you very much, Shelby.
Keep up the good work.
Yes.
So next, we move on to the fiscal year 2025 budget updates and discussion, including presentations from our police and fire chiefs.
So while they're coming up, I'm just going to pass out the, an updated Health Department budget. We, based on the availability of our employee and working with the Public Health Director, we've actually reduced the number of hours, and so the increase now is 13,000 rather than $17,000.
Christie, I'm sorry, I was chewing gum and, can you say that again, please?
Yep, so we've gone from 16 to 12 hours per week for that position, and so we've reduced the budget by about $4,000 for the public health nurse position.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening again, Todd Minaurty, Chief of Police, here to discuss the proposal on the Westboro Police Department Budget to add the rank of corporals and increase by one patrol lieutenant. I will note that this is not adding any additional staff to the department, it's just adding some rank for additional supervision. As I think you've heard me talk about many times, there's deficiency in our level of supervision within our department, especially now with it being so young. So the current state of supervision is five sergeants cover all patrol shifts, in my opinion, there's one shift without a supervisor is too many, but last year, we had 900-plus hours of overtime for shift supervisor coverage. That's still left 76 shifts unfilled with supervisors, they were covered by OICs. Currently, 23 of our 25 patrol officers have less than five years of seniority, so you could literally have a whole group of. So you could literally have a whole group of patrol officers with two, three, four years on the road, patrolling our entire community without a supervisor. I've spoken many, many times, I feel like too many times, about 42 USC Section 1983, which is the federal liability for failure to supervise. That's where the town gets sued in federal court, where there's, there's no limit to the liability. But currently, our police department policies, as you know, are now accredited. So we have to follow our policies. The first policy I would discuss is 4.06, Accountability and Discipline. It states the role and authority of supervisors. The first-line supervisor has the best opportunity to observe and foresee disciplinary problems and therefore bears the primary responsibility for the conduct, discipline, and duty performance of all personnel under their supervision and the basic accountability for failure to take warranted disciplinary action. So without a supervisor on the shift, there's really nobody to do that. Policy 4.30, early intervention and assistance, which is obviously very important. It requires first-line supervisor monitoring. If there isn't a supervisor on the road with the officers going to the calls with them and understanding what they're going through, it's kind of hard to understand that they need early intervention. And of course, we have the use-of-force policy, which clearly states any use of force requires the prompt, promptly notify the immediate supervisor. So I looked at a number of different options. It wasn't really in this order. At first, I looked at, you know, do we add five more patrol sergeants? There's certainly an increased cost to that. I have a concern with having two supervisors of the same rank on the same shift. I can foresee at some point, there could be some conflict there where one supervisor wants to handle something one way and the other supervisor wants to handle it a different way. So I wasn't really in favor of that. I also looked at, early on, having 12-hour shifts. With the addition of corporals, by having 12-hour shifts, we cut down the number of shifts per day. Instead of three, we'd have two. Therefore, you'd need less supervisors. But there was a pretty big cost associated with that and wasn't really well-received in formal discussions with the staff because they were concerned about the impact on their personal lives and their family lives. It's not really something I want to force on them. So then I came upon option one, which is the corporals and the additional patrol lieutenant. Of course, there is always option four back on the table, which was the previous force-in policy that you may remember caused an immediate grievance from the union. So option one, real quickly, the total cost, 29.5. It's obviously an average or an estimate, I should say. Just for, you know, your own information, the cost of the new sergeants would probably be around $54,000.
Can you just go back to that one?
Yeah, sure. What it is, is salary and expenses, which includes, there's, if they would, the corporals would be going into the supervisors' union. So the supervisors have a little bit higher clothing allowance and they have a little bit higher PT stipend. So that would be the increase there. The salary and the expenses is 53. I initially was asking for an $18,000 increase in our general overtime line item. I was willing to take that and put it towards the new corporals. I also budgeted $5,500 a year for the OIC pay, which we obviously wouldn't need anymore. So that comes down to the total cost of the 29.5. The 12-hour shifts, because it turns into a 42-hour week and the officers would need to be compensated for that, comes out to probably about $140,000. We go back to the force-in policy and the union grievance. That cost is obviously unknown. So the new rank structure, creating the corporals, there would be five sergeants and five corporals. That's just for the patrol division. There'd be a sergeant and a corporal assigned at every shift. Add one patrol lieutenant, that would create two patrol lieutenants. One would work days, one would work four-to-twelves. They would be on a four-on-two schedule, overlapping days off, which means there would be command-level coverage on the weekends, which is extremely important. I also believe it, well, I should, I should add that this was part of the multi-year, long-term budget goal. This has been part of our budget goals for a number of years now. I've spoken about it many times. It also offers an opportunity for promotions. It's good for future recruitment and it creates on-the-job training for future sergeants. So in summation, option one is not only the most inexpensive, but I think it will create the best benefit for the community. But I will add, the promotional process is ongoing actually right now, this week, at a cost of about $15,000. Supervisor training that will be required right off the bat is a total of $8,000. And none of that money was budgeted in FY24 simply because there was no, there was no known promotions to be had at the time we were doing the budget. Any questions?
Yeah, can you walk us through the impact of that last part on the FY25 budget? I guess I'm not seeing that, it sounds like new information. I'm not seeing that in our budget book. So I guess, where would I find that and what's the impact to the account line?
The impact of the promotions?
Right, so you have $23,000 here, but is that times some number of promotions?
So this is actually happening at a really good time because we had to do promotions anyways. So the list that we will create through the promotions we're making now will be used to promote the corporals. There won't be another process.
That, that money, though, is, is being spent in FY24. So you wouldn't see it in your budget book.
Okay, so the 20, is just 23,000? Or is it time, is it?
No.
She's talking about the 15 and the eight.
Yeah. So the 15,000 is for the promotional process, the company we hired to come in and run the promotions. So once we make the initial promotions, which is the two vacant lieutenant positions we currently have, then creates two vacant sergeant's positions.
Okay.
So there's four. So once those first four promotions, it's going to cost about $8,000 to train them. Those promotions happen regardless of the corporals. Those are already vacant positions. That was the vacancy with Jeff leaving and Mike leaving. So that had to happen regardless. So it's actually good timing to create the rank of corporals because we're already going to have an established promotional list.
Okay. So, but Christie, to your point, and Todd, to yours, that, the promotional process, the footnote here, we're going to feel that in 2024, but it wasn't budgeted.
Right.
So you'll, you're coming up with that money within your department? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
No, no, I appreciate that. Okay, so, so then.
No.
Yeah, no, 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 that's great. I appreciate the transparency. So in option one, then, what is, I guess I'm not following, the cost of the promotional process for five new corporals?
It's included in that 15,000.
Okay.
Yep.
It's baked into that. Okay, all right, sorry, I was.
Even if we weren't doing the corporals?
We'd see that.
We'd still see this 15,000.
Okay, so somehow, within that number, they can, they, whoever you're working with can account for five new bodies going through that process?
So that, the process began on Monday. There was a written exam for the sergeant's promotion. So all of the people that applied, that are in the running for the sergeant's promotion, they're not all going to get promoted. I will then use that pool to create, to promote corporals out of that pool.
Okay, okay. Okay, I have a couple of other questions on the numbers because I'm still not following what's in our budget book versus what you have here. So you're saying it's a $29,000, 29.5 increase to wages?
And expenses, yeah. I mean, it's 27,100 in wages.
Yep.
And 2,400 in expenses, which is that additional cost for the clothing and PT.
Okay, all right.
So I know there's been some confusion about the money coming out of overtime.
Yep.
So if, if the corporals aren't accepted or approved, I will be going back to my $240,000 request for the overtime for FY25.
So everything in your, in the budget book, everything in the PIR column is related to the corporal, is related to the additions of the corporal rank. And, and so what, what he's showing in the 5104 is that the cost would be the 44,500. But because, if he's able to move forward with it, then there would be a negative offset on the, on 5105, the overtime line of 18,000.
Okay, and so, but if my math is correct, from FY24, in that, in account 5104 for wages, when we look at FY25, on that alone, we're talking about a $243,000 change?
That has a lot to do with the money coming off of AOPA as well as our regular step raises, cost of living raise.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
So the column that says FY25 department request is a level service budget. So that's no, that's just.
Yep, as it is, yep.
And then the PIR is what he's requesting and his only PIR was related to these changes that he's presenting. So the total at the bottom here of the PIR with the, with the offset of the 18,000 is the 29.5, which is what he has up there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I would just note, as far as the overtime line, the 5105, in FY21, it was 250,000. FY22, it went to 256. In FY23, because of COVID and we were cutting budgets, we dropped it to about, a little under 218. With all the cola raises and step raises that have taken place over that period of time, we've only raised it now to 222 for FY24. And I am, I'm willing to fund it again at 222 for FY25. So given the two and a half and the two and a half and the twos and all the step raises, there really has been a cut in overtime.
Questions? All right, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ready? Hi, Patrick Purcell again, serving as Jaffaia Chief. So I don't have a separate presentation other than the one I previously presented. I was asked to come and answer questions. So I didn't do a special one targeting any specific topic on this. So to go back to the budget summit that we had in January, I did a PIR, which is highlighted in yellow, for $27,344. And that was to add four lieutenants to the fire department. That was not physically adding bodies. We were not increasing the complement of personnel that work on the floor right now. That was to add firefighters as lieutenants and to be, to add to our, our complement of our supervision amongst the four different working groups. So an additional one lieutenant per group. So in this request, in my previous presentation, I identified through ICS system, the Incident Command System, or NIMS, the span of control in the fire service is typically anywhere from one supervisor to five to seven personnel. And that is on a normal routine call, not under a hostile type of event like a significant crash or a building fire or anything else of a significant nature. If we have a significant call, which we do regularly, it would drop to a ratio of about one to three. So I'll cite an example of that. So if we have another apartment fire in Fountainhead and we have the shift commander, who's the captain, he would set up a command post in front of that building. If he is the only supervisor on duty today, there would be no supervisor doing interior structural firefighting in an atmosphere that is immediately dangerous to life and health. So no supervisor. You have seen me speak regularly about the turnover and the retirements and adding new personnel within the department. Our, age of our department has decreased drastically in the last 18 months. We have a significant, significant amount of our employees aged 26 or less now. So what, what does it do for us? So really, I just highlighted the age of the department as a safety issue. So when you have younger, younger personnel, they don't, they lack the experience that the veteran employees that we had brought to the table. It affects our operational decision-making. Helps us better if we increase our supervision to manage simultaneous incidents. As you saw on the first slide that I had up, we had a picture of a structure fire and a rollover crash at the same time. We can't, with one supervisor, effectively manage those, those two incidents. We have a challenging service zone here in Westboro. We have multiple limited access highways. We have one that is undergoing a lot of construction right now. So oftentimes, when we commit to a highway, it is not easy to get back into the center of town or anywhere within our town without traveling sometimes as far as Milbury or Framingham or down to Hopkinton, which doesn't seem very far. But just to go down to the Hopkinton West Main Street exit and come back to Westboro, just that transit right there is six miles. And in a fire truck that is governed at 65 miles an hour, you could do the math on that, that's just that travel time right there. That's almost six, almost six minutes. That's a long time if someone's not breathing, you know, to try to, to try to get around and, and help them. So the same thing would be for a supervisor. If the supervisor's up there and they need to come back to town and they need to effect that change to get back, that takes time. And that's, that's, that can be dangerous. One other thing that I highlighted and I drilled down more on the numbers to prepare for tonight. So if you look at the average year, there's about 8,700 hours of time. So if you roll in the benefit time that personnel have within the fire department, specifically the existing line supervisors, if you add all of that up, they have about 2,750 hours of time off with their vacation time and personal time. That does not include sick time, injured-on-duty time, comp time, training time, a host of other issues. So already out of the gate, we're down about to one supervisor 25 to 30% of the time. So by adding an additional supervisor on and only letting one off at a time, I am pretty much guaranteeing, I am guaranteeing that we'll have two supervisors around the clock. So we'll have one on a fire truck that could work with the younger firefighters doing interior firefighting, managing hydraulic tools at a crash, et cetera. And the shift commander in the car exercises command and control over the incident, which if you reflect back to the organizational study done in 2018, that was a priority to get a supervisor back in a car to manage the entire community. One other challenge that we have with the supervisors right now is, and it's been, it's been particularly since COVID-19, they do a lot more ambulance calls right now. And you have heard me speak ad nauseam about holding walls and transfer time at the hospitals. So sometimes your shift commander for the town is at the hospital for two, three hours away from our town. So these are just some of the challenges. I feel like oftentimes, when people look at Chief Menardie's project and my own project, we are two separate departments with, you know, we work together exceptionally well, but these are two, two separate things. So I'm not sure if the questions around these were similar or not, but they're really two separate issues is extremely valid. I believe mine is very valid. And really, that's, that's really how we got to the number today. So I don't have to put a promotional process on. I am fortunate that I have an existing list. So if I needed to pull four names from it today, I could. So there is zero cost on that. Really, how we came up with the 27,344 is, if you look online in the union budget, in the union contract, if you go to the very end, there's a wage scale. And there are three, three lines per fiscal year, F2, F3, F4, and those indicate firefighter, lieutenant, and captain. So if you transition from a firefighter pay at, we figured the salary off of max firefighter pay to max lieutenant pay, it's 27, 27,344 for all four positions. So roughly $7,000 per, per position. Questions?
Yeah, so I guess I wasn't following just that last part. So you have firefighters at max and you'd move them into this lieutenant position at lieutenant max?
Yes. If I didn't, it would be a pay cut. If you look at the graph, the chart, they would be taking a pay cut to take on more liability and responsibility.
Okay, okay, I'd have, I'd have that in front of me, so. And, and just from the org chart? And, and just from the org chart that is in our budget book, I, I guess, only because it's in black and white, the four lieutenants that are listed on, for each group, those are the new positions, or you already have those lieutenant positions?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up...
Oh, thank you.
...a different one that I did for tonight.
Okay, thanks.
To try to make it a little easier. This is what we look like today. Okay, so I have four groups, shift one, two, three, and four. Each group has a captain and a lieutenant, and they each have six firefighters, I'm sorry, nine firefighters.
Yep.
So, say the captain takes the shift off, the lieutenant goes into a car, and there are no supervisors on fire trucks or ambulances, ever, because we keep the car in service. The command car has to stay in service. If we hire, and we add an extra lieutenant, this is what it looks like. So, I broke it down by apparatus, so it would be easier for you to see. So, the captain would stay, the shift commander would stay in the Tahoe, there would be a lieutenant on the engine with three firefighters, a lieutenant on the ladder truck with two fi, with one firefighter, and two paramedic units staffed with a firefighter, paramedic on, firefighter, E M Ts or paramedics on that apparatus. As soon as a third ambulance call comes in, which is what happens today, the ladder truck closes, and the third ambulance goes out, and we go without a ladder truck for at least an hour.
This is very helpful. Can we get a copy of that?
Yes.
Thanks.
Pictures are helpful. Yeah, thank you, Chief. And this diagram here is, assuming no vacations, no time off, this is, everybody's at work every...
This is everybody's at work, and that is, we run at the, we run at minimum, which is nine personnel, the majority of the time, just because of its math. People have benefit time, they want to use it, vacation time, personal time, they, they want to, obviously, use their time, just like we do.
Yeah, I use it, yeah.
Yeah, to be, to be eleven per group is a, a treat. On duty.
Thank you, Chief. Questions, additional questions?
Makes sense, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much, much appreciated.
Thank you.
We didn't have anyone else scheduled to come for this agenda item, but we have one more meeting before the, the warrant, or no, the warrant closed tonight, one more meeting before town meeting, and before the books that go out for publishing for the A F C. We will definitely talk about Youth and Home Services at the next meeting, as well as the landfill budget. But if there is any other question, I would need to know that now, so we can have folks come to present. We can let me know, I guess, you can let Sean and I know, too, if...
Yeah, no questions on the budget?
No, very good.
Okay.
For me.
Okay.
Thank you, Christie. And with that, we move on to the warrant article discussion, including the following presentations. Number one being, I believe it is Article twenty-three, the establishment of a stabilization fund for the Assabitt Valley Technical School.
Yeah, I think you can talk, I think you could also speak to the budget.
Okay. No, no, no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, next one, thank you.
Bunch of books. I can share.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, did you want to hear a little bit about the budget as well?
Yes.
Run through it, or?
Sure.
And then we'll get to the stabilization?
That sounds good, thank you very much.
Perfect, and my school committee representative, Paul George, should be joining us, so he may come in at any moment. Good evening, my name is Ernest Hool, I'm the superintendent director at Assabitt. It's a pleasure, once again, to come before you. This is our fiftieth year that we're celebrating Assabitt's existence. We've had a slew of events, and as always, Paul's done a great job advocating for the students of Westboro, and making sure that we deliver a fiscally responsible budget each year. Part of our budgeting process this year, and over the past number of years, we've talked about, are decreasing reliance on out-of-district tuition to off, which offsets member assessments. So, we've got a couple of things that are happening, and that's really the reason why the stabilization fund article warrant is coming about at this point in time, is for us to be preemptive and proactive in our nature, because we've been able to rely on out-of-district tuition and state grants for most of our capital projects or capital equipment purchases. So, just quickly, as a snapshot for Westboro this year, our, you have, as of our October one numbers, because that's when our enrollment's based off of, it's October first, sixty-seven students, so it's an increase of nine students over this current year in F Y twenty-four. And the, the assessment, and this is not anywhere in your packet right there, this is just some quick fast facts, but the assessment was one million three hundred and fifty-one thousand sixty-six dollars, which is about a hundred thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars more than we had estimated in December, because we have to have our budget done so early. We did make sure we get that new number, once the committee approved it, to Christie, so that's what should be in your book. And so, your enrollment for this year actually is a operating enrollment of six-point-six for the, for the district, bless you. I'm on, on the introduction page, so if you were to look, there's a superintendent's welcome, that's a letter, I'm not going to read to you, but overall, we have a, it's an eight, eight-point-five percent increase over F Y twenty-four. And if you look at the introduction page, we have forty-eight additional in-district students, that's across the entire district, not just from Westboro. And so, what that does, is that impacts our Chapter seventy funding, that comes from the state. It also causes the minimum local contribution in our member communities to go up, based on the enrollment that they have. So, you folks had additional, nine additional students. And then the regional transportation, that's a reimbursement rate that was promised at about a hundred percent when all of our schools were built, the regional schools, but they have two, little extra words there, if appropriated, so it's never been at a hundred percent. Last year was the first year it was ever at ninety-five, but it's always been about between sixty and eighty percent. So, right now, we're hearing that it's going to be about an eighty percent reimbursement. So, what happens is, the difference of our transportation contract, minus the amount they're going to reimburse us for, that difference gets split between our seven member communities. So, the overall realized state aid or assessment contribution is a one-point-eight, so our, but our overall eight-and-a-half percent budget is a two-point-one. So, you'll see that our budget's only up, really, three hundred thousand from F Y twenty-four. It's really driven on the enrollment of our students. So, if you just look, I'm going to run you through real quick, if you go to page five, that's the enrollment numbers, and you'll see for Westboro, across all grades, that last, October of two thousand and twenty-two, when they did our enrollment, it was fifty-eight students, and then for October one of two thousand and twenty-three, we had sixty-seven. So, it was an additional seven, excuse me, nine students, which basically is a fifteen percent jump to your enrollment for the district. Within that, you can see in the column under P S, there's four adult students that are taking some post-secondary type programming, that's either in cosmetology, or it's in an L P N type program. If you look at the bottom-left column, and this is where that, the driver for the reduction of out-of-district tuition, you'll see in the, the three larger communities there, Boyleston, Clinton, Shrewsbury, and then other, those are all zeros. Historically, when I started at Assabitt in two thousand and fifteen, that number has, was about a third of our freshman population. When I started, we weren't able to actually get enough in-district applications to fill the spots available at Assabitt. We fill with three hundred freshmen each year, and this is the first year in which we have all three hundred freshmen from in-district communities, which is a great thing, but obviously, costs come with that.
Are the post-secondary adults, is there an assessment, or are those privately paid for?
Yeah, so those are assessed, and that's generally based on whether the student, if the student take, didn't take, or have a high school education through Assabitt. The way the state regulations work, they have the opportunity through the town to take post-secondary education. Now, that's not our adult ed programs at night, that are called post-graduate programs, which are strictly certificate programs. Post-secondary is meaning that it falls under the same accreditation as our daytime high school programs, and that is at least nine hundred hours of instruction as a post-secondary student.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And so, with this budget, we're trying to get back to some pre-COVID times, we have some, we have on page four, the previous page three staff adjustments, paraprofessional and special education, athletic trainer, and then we're looking to add an elected instructor. It's undetermined at this time if it's going to be a phys ed health teacher, or another art instructor. We generally make that decision closer to May, as to which instructor it will be, based on the survey of our students for when they do their program of studies, so.
You said art or phys ed? Is that, you said art or phys ed?
It's an art or phys ed health teacher, yeah. Our statutory method of assessment is, the statutory method of assessment, which is basically based on national law, seventy S six, that's on page six, and, and part of that is the, the maximum local contribution, which is the aggregate wealth model, based on your community, and the number of students that come here, they look at median wage, medium income from the town, and then also what your growth is. So, sometimes, when you look at student enrollment numbers, and you say, if, okay, if I have X amount of students, and I take our assessment and divide it by this, the numbers don't always add up, because the formula that they use as a state, I'm sure you all know, would probably wrap around the room, right, on an Excel spreadsheet, and I couldn't explain it to you if I tried, doesn't always add up to quick, easy numbers when you tie it to enrollment, so, because there's additional factors. So, if we just quickly turn to page ten. On page ten, there's just a quick little snapshot, I just use it as a reference. So, for net school spending, I, I mentioned that Assabitt always tries to make sure we bring a fiscally responsible budget to all of our communities. We tend to stay right around net school spending at a hundred percent, or a hundred and one, a hundred and two, a hundred and three percent. The past couple of years, we were at slightly below, and what the Department of Ed basically says, or the state says, that if you don't meet your minimum requirement, you then have to make it up over the next couple of years. So, in the, in the chart, you see, because they haven't updated it with the state, F Y twenty-three, Assabitt, we were slightly below at ninety-seven point six, but we generally are at the one, one hundred and one, one hundred and two percent. So, we don't have a lot of, anything to cut out of our budget, everything that's there is what's required by, by the state. And then I just, I'll share with you, Westboro, which is up, the last one on the yellow, and you'll see what's required, and then what's actually spent as of, and that was for F Y twenty-three. So, it was a one hundred and seventy-one percent, the required is a one fifty-three. So, that's just a reference, that we, we try and run as lean as we possibly can. The minimum local contribution tab, which is page eleven, you'll see that Westboro at the bottom, there's the number for twenty-four, which is fifty-eight students, for twenty-five, we went up to nine to sixty-seven, and then you'll see that, basically, your minimum local contribution went up by two-hundred-and-six thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars, based on those nine additional students, and that's directly from the state. If you turn to page twelve, which I guess I'll call the money page, and you look, and you start at the top where the blue is, over to the far right, you'll see there's the total of all of these end columns, and you'll see Westboro right there at the end. The one million one seventy-three two sixteen, that's the total minimum local contribution towards the foundation. You'll then see that, as I mentioned with the net busing, the difference, we are estimating, based on the reimbursement we're getting, that we have five-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand two ninety-six that will assess to our seven member communities, thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-two will be assessed to Westboro. The O P E B, as you all know, right, we're supposed to meet our minimum contribution, and we had been only doing thirty-five thousand. Last year, we went to fifty, this year, we decided to go to seventy-five. We're still not going to make it, meet it at that amount, but, but it's a start. And then the capital improvement fund is something that's new, and that is really to tie in with the stabilization fund. However, if the stabilization fund did not get approved, it would still remain in the F Y twenty-five budget, and we would just have to spend that money this year for capital improvements for the, for the district, or capital equipment. And so, Westboro's portion of that, of the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, is sixteen thousand four thirty-eight. So, the long-term debt assess, debt service is the renovation project that was, went underway, that was voted in two thousand and thirteen, and there's a percentage, which we'll get to in the next couple of slides, but that percentage could be lower, or could be higher than what your current six-point-six is, but at the time when it was voted in two thousand and thirteen, it was a three-year average that would stay for the life of the debt service payment. So, that payment, Westboro's share is one hundred and eighteen thousand one twenty-nine, and the total assessment due for F Y twenty-five would be one million three hundred and fifty-one thousand sixty-six dollars. And I know certain communities will break those out, and do this debt assessment separate, some put them together. For our purposes, just so people know what the totals are, we've combined it in this chart.
So, so in your books, under education, it does, we do break it out, but in the actual budget that is read at town meeting, it's one number?
So, the, the debt, capital debt assessment, just quickly, we're in the ninth year, or ninth payment for, in F Y twenty-five, it was a twenty-seven million dollar bond that was pulled. It was twenty-nine dol, twenty-nine million total, the district decided to take on the two additional mil, two million, and that's been paid off and paid through a ban that the district handled through out-of-district revenue. Twenty-seven was what was assessed and set as the bond payment moving forward. So, you'll see on the chart for, on page fifteen, or actually, on page fourteen, you'll see Westboro's three-year average is a six-point-seven-two percent, that will be for the life of the bond, and each year, it pretty much drops about fifty-five thousand for all seven communities, and you'll see the breakdown of what, what the reduction was for Westboro, and that was three thousand six ninety-six. On page fifteen, you'll see the debt schedule, and if you go to the very far end, on the right, you'll see Westboro, and it looks like the chart kind of got ate up by the word Assabitt there, but twenty forty-two is when the final payment for the debt assessment is, but you can see that the reduction happens over time. And I think, actually, this happened prior to my arrival at Assabitt, but I would provide kudos to the, the committee and administration before me, because at least you, as select board members, and as town administrators, have the ability to budget at least what the debt service pa, payment is, and you don't have fluctuating, fluctuating percentages. Any questions so far?
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Page sixteen, just real quick, that's our total rev, operational revenue plan, and you'll see, if you just looked at the top, you can kind of walk your way down from the top to bottom, which was basically, now, this is a snapshot of all the slides we just went through. You'll see that there's the, the nine million eight thirty-two, nine sixty, is, that's our Chapter seventy-eight. You'll see the Westboro minimum local contribution of the one million one seventy-three two sixteen, that's listed there. We are going to include four hundred and fifty thousand from our excess and deficiency. It's a little bit of a reduction from what we had used for this year, or fifty thousand. We are going to add a hundred and fifty thousand in interest income to the revenue plan, and then seventy-five thousand in Medicaid reimbursement, that's kind of a moving target, because Medicaid reimbursement is really based on the services that you're providing to students that you can build back for, and they're not all... And they're not all, they don't all have the ability to be billed back, so that one's kind of a moving target, so we reduced it by 5,000. You can see the regional school transportation is the 760, 950, that's the 80% that we're looking to hopefully get back. That's the number that was in the governor's budget. And then down below, you'll see there's another member community assessments. That's the 177,850. That's just the net school, that's the busing, that's the OPEB, that's the capital improvement fund, just broken down into that, that figure. Okay? And then, so you have the total number, budget number at the bottom, 27,425,514. And that's the total operational budget. Now, if you just take a look at page 17, as I mentioned, we're starting to reduce our reliance on out-of-district tuition. So we are supporting this budget, still with 1.7 million of out-of-district tuition money. And that 1.5 of it will be applied towards health insurance, and 200,000 will be applied to utility, utilities, specifically electricity. In the past, or as you can see just last, this year, we had allocated 2.5. In the past, when I started, it was about 6.5 million. But at that point in time, we had about, a third of our population was out-of-district students, so that brought in, again, out-of-district revenue, which could offset the member assessments. So now with that shift happening, we're seeing that this is probably going to be the next couple of years like this, and that by FY27 is probably the year in which it will level off. We'll still have a handful of out-of-district kids that were potentially in district and then may have moved out of district, the junior, senior years. You do have situations where students are maybe placed with a foster family or through DCF, and they end up getting placed in different towns, but still maybe able to stay at ASABET. So we are going to be allocating some money out of out-of-district, but I would, you know, just caution the select board that, you know, the following year, that's going to reduce again, and it will happen again, so. So that's kind of it, in a nutshell, the, page 18 has expenditures by function, kind of at a higher level. And you can see really the increases are in the function line 2000, which is instruction, which is cost of living adjustments, steps and levels with our teachers. It has the three new positions that we talked about in there, as well as cost of just consumable supplies when you're operating a career in technical high school. If you're doing any kind of construction, we had a supplier let us know that Sheetrock was going to be going up 20% in the next month or so. So if you need to buy, buy early. So all of those things affect, you know, it's, our consumables, whether it's copper or electrical cabling for the electrical wiring department, those consumables go up. And then the other larger increases in operation and maintenance. The one thing with the renovation project, what it didn't do, it did the majority of things when it came to building envelope, weatherization, roof, heating ventilation, sprinkler system. However, it didn't upgrade our phone system, which we kind of have a hybrid type phone system. It's partly analog and partly, you know, I wouldn't even say IP, but, because it takes...
It's, it's digital, but it's, it's basically ran by analog.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's probably the first digital system that ever came out of a phone system. So that's one of the larger improvements that's in the operation and maintenance that we're looking at. So, you know, with that, and as I mentioned, the things that weren't able to get repaired or corrected in a renovation project, you know, we have 50-year-old floors that the tiles are starting to pop up. And so what happens with those tiles, because, because of the year in which the building was built, they're put down with a mastic that was done with asbestos. So then you'd have to pull the tiles up, you'd have to do abatement. Abatement's about two-thirds greater the cost of what the actual floor installation is. And right now, we don't, you know, we're kind of doing it on a patch-by-patch basis. But eventually, we've got areas where we're seeing that, an issue. Our roadways, our parking lots, 50 years old, those are starting to fail in nature. And again, we're patching as we can go, but depending upon the weather, luckily, this has been a decent, I won't even say it, I'll just knock on the table. That, so those are the things that are some of the capital projects that we're talking about. And that's just for building infrastructure and facilities and grounds. The other component that we've been fortunate is that through straight, state grant funding, which started with Deval Patrick, Governor Deval Patrick's tenure, was that they started workforce skills grants. And those grants were basically competitive grants that regional vocational schools or chapter 74 programs could apply for. We've applied for every single grant that's gone out and have received about $7 million since it came about in 2015. And so with that, it's not a sustainable source, though. We don't know if we're going to be getting it every year. We have been fortunate, but that's the other need besides the, the capital improvement of infrastructure, is the capital equipment that our programs need to be up to date and industry standard. So that would kind of ties us right into the stabilization fund, if there's no questions about the budget.
I have a question about student enrollment, which ties to the budget. So it looks like, just going back to out-of-district, it looks like you have about 66 students out of district right now in grade 12, so presuming they all roll off and they don't, they're not postgraduate or counted in there. So that leaves, if numbers stay even, 48 from grade 11 that continue onto grade 12. Do you anticipate, just based on enrollment trends, that the 66 would sort of be replenished in your new grade nine? From, like, is there enough interest of like?
Yeah, so...
Or would you expect a decrease in overall student enrollment?
Yeah, nope. So we are, we currently take in 300 students. It used to be 265, we bumped it to 275, went to 285, now we're at 300. Sometimes we'll go to 305, depending upon, you know, because over the course of the summer, friends get to hang out with friends, they sometimes change their mind, they don't come in. But we're getting about 450 to 457 in district applications now. On top of that, we get about 150 to 155 out-of-district applications still. So we're looking at just close to our, our under 600 applications per year for 300 slots. The unfortunate and unintended consequence of having such a larger in district interest is that we've pushed some of our longstanding towns like a Shrewsbury or Clinton out. But it's not just ASABET because it's an issue across the state, that most schools are finding that they are oversubscribed for interest. And if we had a way to expand or add satellite-type programs that they could be part of, it would be something we would look to do. I know, I can't come back to the towns and ask for another, you know, 62 million to put an addition on. So what we had pushed for was actually, and it got passed last year, was the ability to lease for 25 years for educational purposes. So, and looking at some commercial buildings, if there was anything close to the school, that we could offer some type of satellite-type programs that through the additional students and out-of-district students, that it would be able to fund itself to be able to function, that's something we would look at. But again, it would have to be cost-effective. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Christie, I think you had a question.
I just wanted to note for the board, I actually did not receive the updated assessment, or maybe, it's possible that it was sent to, we've had a lot of turnover in the finance department. So your budgets do not reflect that number. So the, it's actually $226,000 higher than what we, they had voted in December. So I just want to be clear about that.
The fact is, kids equal money, money equals kids. So the more kids you get...
Yeah.
The more expensive it is. The problem that we've, we don't, it's not a problem. It turns out it's a side effect. The fact that Governor Weld really pushed technical education, and he really encouraged the regional schools to step up. And in doing so, we have a larger population of in, in district students, that's not on the upside. About 33% of our kids are special needs coming in, only about 15% are special needs leaving. So we conquer a lot of problems with a lot of resources. We have a lot of special need resources at ASABET that are, that I'm really proud of because we put a lot of effort into making sure we had the staff and we had the facilities to do what we needed to do to help these kids. The other thing is, by adding biotech, for instance, today I was talking to a parent. A student went to the nursing program. For the nursing program, she decided to go into pathology, all right? Well, out of high school, and with some, a little bit of training, she's making 65 an hour as an assistant pathologist. All right? So the, the, the actual economic reason for going to a technical school is there. I mean, we have kids coming out of electrical training that are starting off at $32 an hour, all right? I mean, it, the, 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 the need for a college education, I think, is necessary. But I believe it or not, I believe it's much more appreciative when you decide to go to school after doing something else. Like, if you get out of school at 18, you work for three or four years in whatever trade you're in, you decide, you know what, I don't want to be pulling this wrench for the rest of my life, I better learn something about business. Next thing you know, the kid's going to college, but now he's 21. A whole different environment for learning. So we find that we have a lot of really great achievers. One of our electrical students started her own electrical company, and she was back at the school when we were having a conversation, tapping into the instructors to get more information about how do I run this company? All right? So it's an ongoing process, and the fact that a lot of our teachers have been around for a long time, they have a lot of students that come to them for advice. So it, I could see why our population has increased, because as these kids get more successful, the word of mouth of, well, this is what I did, and this is how I got here. And we could see that. And unfortunately, downside is, we don't have the extra two or three million in the budget that we were getting from other communities. And we've always passed that along, so the stabilization fund winds up being something that really helps us be able to deal with the expenses that occur on a, on a daily basis, but you never know exactly what they're going to be.
Sorry, I misspoke. So it's a, it's an additional 100,000. The, the 200,000 number I gave was over last year's budget. So it's about 100,000 more than what was estimated in your budget. So it's a different, or you look like you're looking at the number.
We, I thought it was, if I look at the book, it was like 79,000, but...
It's, so 1,1247,759, that might have actually been...
So the...
The book could be different than what we're carrying because of when they vote on the initial budget.
Okay. I was going to detail section, had a 1, 2, 7, 1, 1, 5, 3. Is that the budget we originally sent you in December? That you're referring to?
Yeah, the, so the assessment we were carrying was 1.247.
Okay. So that was before the governor's budget numbers came out?
Right, exactly, yeah.
So, right, that's what the, the change was. Yep.
So, yeah, could, the number in the budget on the website is just different than the number you're carrying?
I'd have, I guess, I guess, so I have to look at it.
It's 1, 2, 7, 1, 1, 5, 3.
Right.
Which would be an 80,000, but you're carrying a lower number, so...
Based, yeah, based on what was voted.
Yeah, it was voted, so it is $100,000.
Yeah.
That's fine, we're good.
I just wanted to...
Put your books back.
And then just quickly on the stabilization fund. So as I mentioned, with some of the, the reasoning behind it, if you look at page, it's actually page 21, I just said, you know, all of our communities have stabilization funds that have been created for you as municipalities or cities, and regional school districts, as we're not technically part of your municipality, to have the ability to access that. Mass General Law Section, Chapter 71, Section 16G and a half, allows regional school districts to be able to have a stabilization fund created. And basically what happens is, the, the warrant article language that the committee voted that's before you on page 20, was, they had two samples. This was the more detailed version, and there was also a very vanilla generic one that I thought just lent itself to too many questions, and that we wanted it to have a specific purpose. So Section 16G and a half, actually, if you were to look at that link, is very detailed in what the fund is to be utilized for. I've also provided, and I can, I think Christie has this electronic, electronically, you should, if not, I'll get it to you, so that way you have those two hyperlinks. But Mass Department of Ed also provides some guidance on what you can do with regional stabilization funds. So in essence, two-thirds of our communities have to vote to have it established, just as though, just like a budget, budgetary function, and it has to be by a majority vote within each of the communities. The regional school district, as the governing body, oversees basically the purpose and use and approval of that fund. The fund can have up to 5% of our budget for that specific year. So at a $25 million budget, we're at 1.25 million, basically, is what the capacity that could be in that account. The hope is that if it were to get approved, the 250,000 right now, we'd like to kind of build the stabilization fund. If we don't have that, we don't have a means to carry it over from year to year to build it, to do some larger projects, such as the roadways in the, in the parking lots. When we had looked at those prior to COVID, we were getting estimates for about $800,000 to $900,000. When we looked after COVID, they were somewhere in the 1.3 to 1.4 million dollars. I haven't looked recently because we really don't have any money to do anything with it, so I'm not even, you know, we're just, we're patching at this point. So basically, that's with the stabilization fund. And then basically, how would we, how we would monitor it or present it is that budgetary meetings like this each year, we would present to you in a slide, what's in that fund. And then if we were to be doing any types of purchases that were approved by the school committee, that would be also listed out in that fund, so you'd know exactly how the money was being used. I can share with you, for an example, we recently had to purchase a computer numeric-controlled CNC plasma cutting machine for our metal fabrication department, and that was to the tune of about $41,000. Luckily, the Department of Ed, through Perkins Funding, which is federal funding for programs with chapter 74 programs, said, hey, we have some extra money, and based on your enrollment, this is how much basically you're going to get. It was somewhere around 35,000, and then just came in at 41,000. So we were able to purchase that piece of equipment. So obviously, with not having it as a standing line item in an operational budget, it's difficult to be able to provide that type of equipment for students unless you have some type of stabilization fund, or you're also trying for grant money. So that's really the purpose behind the stabilization fund, so.
Just to be clear, so right now, your capital improvement fund is at 250,000?
That's what's, yeah, we've listed that as a budget, as the line item. We, the committee basically said they didn't want to start for anything lower than that, 250. Yep.
So is, I guess, just what I heard you say earlier when we were talking about that is that the capital improvement will tie into the stabilization, the stabilization allows you to use that money over, not an annual basis, a longer period of time? So is this 250 plus 250, or is this...
So it would be something that we would look to put into the budget yearly.
Okay.
And then build upon it, yeah, and to build upon it yearly.
But it's plus that.
So it would become an operational line item.
All right, okay.
And so for this year, however, basically, on the slide, if you went back to page 12, all of the required, based on our statutory method of assessment, the only thing that's not required for our communities to pay is the capital improvement fund, 250,000. So if for some reason, folks were to vote down the budget...
Yeah.
The town of Westboro would save 16,438.
Understand.
But the state would mandate that you'd have to pay all the rest. So, again, it's the first time in 50 years that we've come with any kind of stabilization fund like that. It's because we're trying to be preemptive and proactive. I can share, I'm a welder by trade. You should have used the welding explanation, in case they want to be superintendent. But at my prior district, there was a trades hall, and it was at Minuteman in Lexington. And they had a fire chief that was longstanding and had basically said, and it was built in the 70s, so if you can imagine, they just had painted lines on the floor, and that's what separated programs. If you can imagine a carpentry shop, an electrical shop with no walls, things maybe got tossed. Over the years, fences were put up, walls were put up, and there were... Over the years, fences were put up, walls were put up and they were made out of plywood. And the then-chief at the time said, if you just use a fire every time to paint, you'll be fine. Well, the new fire chief came in and basically said to them, you either have to have this all removed and out by Monday or you've got to have the power shut off to this end of the building and you can't use that area until it's fixed. So obviously, they couldn't get it fixed and torn out in two days because it was a Wednesday. So basically, what happened was there was a four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar bill because it's life and safety that went banked to the member communities for Minuteman. And that's what I'm trying to avoid by the stabilization fund. So that's the purpose of really trying to have something in place.
But just so I'm clear, and I, I guess, so I understand what you're budgeting for in capital is two hundred and fifty and the assessment to Westboro would be sixteen, four. In FY twenty-five, what I'm hearing you say is we're going to see an additional assessment.
No, no, it's, it's, that two fifty is part of this FY twenty-five budget.
Okay, thank you.
And then in twenty-six, the plan would be to have two fifty again.
Understand.
As part of the budget.
So it's not, we're not.
Yeah, not, not over and above.
Thank you.
It's just, it's, it's over and above what the state requires you to have to pay.
Yep.
So if for some reason you decided not to vote the budget, that would be the only savings.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
I probably confused that.
No, no, obviously, I'm the only one asking the questions.
Oh, okay.
Question, so you keep referring to out-of-district tuitions. And I'm trying to think about sort of how I could compare this. I think of it as like UMass Amherst has in-state tuitions. And then are you charging more out?
No, so the, so the out-of-district tuition is actually set by the Commissioner of Education. Every spring, we haven't actually got the number yet for twenty-five. But generally, what it is, it, he sets the tuition rate, which is right now eighteen and some change. And that's just for the student to come and attend ASABET. It does not include transportation services. So the community has to pay that separate and set up transportation. And in addition, we've started to do an à la carte service for those students requiring special education services. Now, in district, it's all handled within your assessment because the committee feels as though that's part of the nature of how we, of being a member of the ASABET district, that any kind of services for special ed shouldn't be on top of what, what is being charged in your assessment. For the added district folks, there's an additional charge to handle that. So it's less, yeah, less money.
I think what also should be noted, we have a, we have a no-cut sports program, which means anybody who wants to play can play. We don't have any athletic fees, all right? What kids don't realize is once you give them a sport, you now have a stick that you didn't have before. So if you don't get a C, you don't get to play your favorite sport, all right? So it gives us a little more leverage. But more than that, it brings kids together from seven different towns into a more cohesive group. And we wind up, I think about, think about a kid who's, you know, fourteen or fifteen, going to a school with only a few of his friends that are there. He does it in a different place, he's got to go to a different place. And to, to become part of the community takes some effort. And it's amazing to me how cohesive it works. I mean, I, I joined the committee temporarily in nineteen ninety-one. It was like flypaper, I could never leave, all right? And the reason being is our, our nursing program, I go up to Coleman House, they're one of my customers. And I talk to Patrick Blake, who's the director. And he says, you know, we have kids coming out of ASABET that are more knowledgeable than some of our ends. So you hear a lot of good things all the time and you, you see, you get a warm feeling that, you know, all the time you're spending in a committee trying to talk about the most mundane, mundane things in the world, actually has some real positive output, you know? So it's, I think we do a pretty good job. I think we do a good job with the kids, I think we do a good job with the community. And if you take a look at some of the things we've done in, in this town and other towns, absolutely fantastic. I mean, they refurbished a house for the, what was it, the Habitat for Humanity.
Yep.
And they, two, two apartments, they gutted the place. I mean, it was like the Taj Mahal compared to what it was. I mean, it was absolutely fantastic. So the kids got a lot of hands-on time. Northborough got a couple of units that were really good for people. You know, everybody walks around with, and here's a piece that amazes me. On their vacation week, kids will volunteer along with teachers to go to Maine and work on veterans' housing for the week they're supposed to be off. You know, that says something about the school spirit, you know? I mean, I think it's a very, very positive place. And I, it's, it's a pleasure to, a pleasure to be there, you know? It's a pleasure to serve Westboro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just a question back on, and thank you, Paul, for those comments. You always give us good, good color there and we appreciate that because you see it much more than, than many of us do. But back on the stabilization fund, just to make sure I heard it correctly on how it differs, I think, from the town is that I understand how it votes in, majority vote by each, by each town, and you need two-thirds of the member communities to vote it in. But then when expenditures are happening, is that just under the control of the school committee?
Just under the purview of the school committee.
So it doesn't have to come back to the town for voting?
And it's a two-thirds vote of the committee in order to approve any kind of expenditures.
Kind of on our side, it's two-thirds.
Yep.
To remove from stabilization by town meeting. I just want to make sure we didn't have to, you didn't have to come back to us as member communities to vote on. Okay.
Nope.
Thank you.
There's also a whole lot of D O R rules. I mean, you're sitting there minding your own business. And for twenty-three years, you've done something this way. And all of a sudden, the D O R says, oh, by the way, you owe us half a million bucks, let's go and do it this way. Yeah, and you're subject, you have no choice, you're subject to whatever it is. But, you know, you only get paid twice a year. So now you got to figure out how I juggle this and not, I can't go back to the towns, I have to figure out how to pay for this. So, and, and they, they throw that at you every once in a while and you sit there and you scratch your head. You say, wait a minute, you did this for twenty-three years. Since the last time you, you dealt with the school funding budget, where did this come from? And there's never any answer, it just, it just appears.
Yeah, so I'm hugely supportive of ASABET and the vocational programs in our state. My understanding is the state right now is seeing for every eight vocational or tradesmen retiring, only one person's coming into the field, which is a pretty staggering number if it's true. I have a number of family members who are plumbers and carpenters. I myself have built a number of habitat homes and worked with some of the students from ASABET and have seen their skills. So it's fantastic and I really appreciate the work you all do there. I only have one question for you. You mentioned the stabilization fund currently, our current stabilization fund, the ASABET can pull in, dip into that, can, has access to our stabilization fund.
No, no, so, no, so what I was saying is we don't have a stabilization fund.
Okay.
So if we were to try to plan any of these things, you know, even though we're an extension of your town because we have the partnership with the town, we don't have the ability to access your stabilization.
Okay, I misunderstood.
The only, yeah, so that's the why we need a creation of one of our own. And it's really to avoid having you get some big bill out of the blue in case something catastrophic or life safety happens.
Yep.
I don't really want to do that. We've been pretty good at managing the finances and not having that happen, so we're trying to avoid that. And I think just to add to, and I don't know if Paul knows this, but we're actually going to be working with the Conservation Committee to, for the Westboro Land Trust to put in a, the field bridge, twenty-four foot. I believe you guys got a, a grant. And I had reached out to the Conservation Commissioner and said, hey, if our kids can help in any way, shape or form. So she's reached out and spoke with Wayne Colson. So at some point, they'll be doing all the concrete pilings and, and putting in that bridge. So there'll be no labor costs for the, for the city, for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this presentation.
Yeah. Any, any final questions, Paul?
Gentlemen, thank you both for coming this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the continued support.
So forgive me for being a little late. I take care of my hundred-year-old mother-in-law. She gets very testy when she doesn't have dinner on time, you know?
Well, and, and we throw people off when we're ahead of schedule.
Oh, great, thank you.
Got it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, awesome. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, all right, thank you very much. All right, Paul.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. This is warrant article number sixteen, I believe, correct, municipal decarbonization plan. Gentlemen, thanks for coming this evening.
Are you seeing a slide?
I don't know, maybe plug it in and we'll.
Plug it in and give it a try. Fifty-fifty roll.
It's, it's either one or two.
Hi, everybody. Ben Bowers, Sustainability Coordinator here with.
Pete Dunbeck, Eight Way Side Road.
So we're here for article sixteen on the municipal decarbonization study. You think I should recite the whole thing?
No.
Okay. So the purpose of this article is to complete guidelines brought upon the new Climate Leaders Program that was announced by D O E R. I'm going to go a little bit more into the Climate Leaders in next slides. So this is a requirement of the Climate Leaders Program, which is the development of a decarbonization plan. And the funding purpose of this article is to secure engineering services for creating the decarbonization plan. We currently do not have a definitive cost, but by town meeting, we plan on having a definitive cost. Right now, we've talked with Power Options, who's provided us a verbal quote of ten to twelve thousand. And that's depending on the number of buildings. However, we are waiting on D O E R's announcement for grant funding. They announced earlier in October that they're going to be coming out with technical assistance. There's been a lot of delays with D O E R and I've been in contact with our representative there. They do plan on having the grant, technical assistance up before town meeting, town meeting date.
But that would be a competitive grant and we won't know whether we've successfully achieved it. So we're, we're going to need to be drawing, applying for this article.
Right, so the purpose is just to have, have this in, in case we do not receive that. So for Climate Leaders, this was announced in October, twenty twenty-three. The Climate Leaders Communities Program represents the next evolution in the Massachusetts, Massachusetts commitment to climate goals. It's essentially Green Communities two point O. This is more aligned to Massachusetts climate goals for twenty fifty, which the Green Communities one point O was not as aligned. So the, the reason we are, why Climate Leaders, why are we wanting to, to become a part of this? So unlike the, the Green Communities Program, like I said, it's more aligned with the twenty fifty goals that Massachusetts has put in place. And it's just a more robust climate action commitments. And they're also going to be providing comprehensive support throughout the program to municipalities for tools, resources, and technical assistance for emissions reductions in municipal operations in the wider community, focusing on electrification, efficiency in buildings and transportation. And this also opens up access to a new pool of grant funding for renewable energy projects and energy efficiency policies along with decarbonization activities. The application deadline is targeted for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. My assumption is the state could be changed because of D O E R's a little backed up right now. So our goal is to complete the application by the end of twenty twenty-four.
Just a bit of clarification, maybe. There's a first round of grants, of applications to be climate leaders that Ben just referred to, June, maybe slipping into July. We're not planning to be in the first cohort. Our intent is to be in the second cohort. And we're expecting that to be in the end of the year. So we're pacing ourselves for two reasons. One is we can learn from the first cohort communities and they can debug the process and so forth. But also we'll have fall town meeting to, to, to achieve one of the outcomes we will be talking about in a minute.
So the Climate Leaders Program has six guidelines. Three of these guidelines we currently have. So to be good standing in green communities, we are. Sustainable Westboro suffices number two, so maintaining a local committee. And I have talked with Kelly Brown from D O E R and got confirmation that the climate action plan does suffice for number three as a municipal dark, decarbonization commitment. So moving on to four, that's the article I'm, we're presenting today. And for number five, the zero vehicle emissions policy, we are currently focusing on this, which involves developing the policy. And this is a no-budget policy, but needs approval from both select board and the school committee. So that's in process. And then criterion six, which involves a town meeting vote following initial review, is an ongoing effort that will be progressed throughout the year.
Okay, so for the focus of this article is the decarbonization roadmap. And the methodology that the state's recommending is to begin with the baseline conditions of all your buildings. And it's really baseline conditions of emissions. It also includes vehicles, but the study we're talking about is for the buildings. The outcome of that, the engineering services include a set of recommendations. And these are pretty specific recommendations, not just kind of general directional statements, but what type of equipment is appropriate in different situations and so forth. The last point in the methodology is, is what the state calls a zero overtime policy. And in the second bullet talks about that. So it's a, an approach where you have a set of defined trigger events when you need to consider investments. Doesn't require the investments, but it's triggers that cause you to consider it. And, there's you down there, there we go, right there. So for example, you could have, every three years, have an energy checkup on all your buildings. You could have a methodology where every time you have a lease turnover is a trigger event. And it's, it's at these points that are the lowest cost opportunities for when to make changes. So it's, it's not a, an approach where it says, go in and rip out equipment that's working. It's when equipment fails, be ready with a, an analysis so that you can efficiently repair the building or get it back online and do it in a, in a high-efficiency way. So this is the preparation work of doing, looking for the opportunities, where are the opportunities? And in the end, all of the decisions get made through the normal budgeting processes. So things that are within the select board control would come back here. Things that require town meeting votes would be done there. And the decisions to make a change would be basically when you have the most reliable data. So it's not a plan that we do now, it's twenty-five years in the future and you're guessing at what the costs are going to be or what the needs are going to be. It's based on these trigger events. The trigger events is, then sets off policies that we would be expected to implement. And our goal and expectation is those policies just get into the normal course of operations of the administrative staffs, so like the capital project process and department budgets and so forth. So they would be involved in the development of this roadmap. They'd know the language of it. And then when the events happen, they'd be prepared to make the decisions and recommendations on investments. So of course, the expectation is this will minimize the aggregate cost over time because we're not going to try to state and we are not trying to drive investments ahead of when they're needed. And you, you, if you get the lowest cost by doing it, like when a construction project's happening, that's when you want to be doing furnace replacement and so forth. So that's what we're proposing. We think it's going to be about twelve thousand dollars. We are hopeful that we're going to get grant money and not have to spend any of it. But the timing of, is such that we need to get the approval at town meeting.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Is the scope of this, does it include the school buildings?
Yes.
Coordinating with the school committee?
Yeah, so.
It would, it'll, it'll be all municipal buildings and vehicles for this roadmap.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Library Building Repair with the Library Building Committee. Sure. Unless you prefer the podium, but it's up to you.
You know, I'm thinking if I plug it in here, it'll work. Hey. This is not working the way you expected it to. But I'll just, I'm going to wing it because I don't see my notes. I'm Ed Baldwin, twenty-five Mount Pleasant Street. I am a library trustee and the chair of the Library Building Committee. And I would like to thank the Select Board for the opportunity to provide information on the library repair project. I also want to just thank and acknowledge the Building Committee members. We have a, the members bring a really wide range of expertise and experience in the construction industry and town government and just, you know, being citizens. And they've all put a lot of work into this, to getting us where we are now. Just some background, as you probably remember from October, we were considering four different scenarios for the repair. Ranging, it's ranging from the base repair plus some high priority program improvements. It's an estimated cost of twelve million dollars. Up to with more program improvements, electrification and sustainability, and then finally, everything. And the cost went up with each of those steps. So we, you know, we learned from the previous town meetings that the town is really interested in maintaining low costs. So we were initially looking at option one, the base repair, which was estimated at the time at being about twelve million. We had some suggestions from residents and within the, within the Building Committee to expand on that a little bit by going, by making some long-term repairs instead of Band-Aids. And that would give us higher initial costs, but much better long-term costs. So we called that scenario one A, and that's what we ultimately went with. So let me talk a little bit about the, our goals and objectives for why we chose one A. You can see cost effectiveness, essential maintenance, code compliance, and program improvement, so the four main goals. Cost effectiveness, we wanted to choose cost-effective repairs, improvements, upgrades, and all that through, considering both initial and lifetime costs. We're not going for the cheapest. We're not going for the longest lived. We want the best value. And in fact, getting the best value for the taxpayer's investment is critical to all of us. We're all taxpayers, everyone on the committee, and we want to use those tax money well. So going through the other goals, essential maintenance, the, the, any building needs regular maintenance. And the library had been deferring some of the maintenance for almost a decade. Things like the windows, which we actually put on hold because we were putting, planning to do them as part of the renovation project. So those things are now almost a decade beyond where we need them. Other things, we're fixing the roof. We are now getting, when it rains hard, which has happened several times in the past few months, we get leaks, pardon me, leaks in the old nineteen oh eight part of the building and the new nineteen eighty part of the building. We have a, the HVAC system has, it's a complicated mixture of things of different ages. Some of those, some of the units are at their end of life or failing. We actually had one of them catch fire in December twenty twenty-two. So that's definitely end of life for that whole family of series. And we want to replace the lower floor carpet. It's been in a humid environment for way too long. Those changes cost enough to trigger requirements, compliance to building codes. So we have the Americans for Disabilities Act. I should say the ADA compliance. There's numerous small changes, like automatic doors and push a button and you can get through, new doorknobs, new stair rails. And one, we may need to make one big change, which is a handicap accessible ramp into the front entrance and one facing Main Street. There are a lot of disadvantages to that. It costs a little more than half a million dollars. That's our current estimate, anyway. And it would mess, it would really wreak havoc with the historic and aesthetics of the front of the building. On the other hand, we haven't really looked into how much need that would serve. So we, the Building Committee, are going to reach out to the Disability Commission and other relevant town bodies and get an assessment of that need and preparation if it seems appropriate to seek a variance to try to not, not have to do all that expense and work. I should also add, you're all familiar with our statement on the Americans for Disabilities Act. And that is relevant to, I believe it's Article forty, one of the public things. One of the, um, public. One of the articles. We are also planning to add three new restrooms and update the two that we have. Those are, that's both a code requirement and something that's been requested for at least decades of the library with our two rooms. And we'll have to do a lot of upgrades to bring the building from compliance with nineteen eighty codes to twenty twenty codes, twenty twenty-three, four codes. That's electrical, energy plumbing, fire suppression, structural. There, there is a lot of work that will need to go on under the, under the hood to get that to go. And finally, you know, we're focused on repairs, but it made sense to the Building Committee that while we're doing the repairs, we have, you know, we're out of the building. The work crews are in the building. The walls are opened up. There's some things we can do relatively inexpensively that will provide, that will meet some major needs in the town for relatively low money. And this is the list, but rather than read through the list, I have some photos or, well, some images, not photos, sorry. One is moving the teen room. As you probably know, the teen room right now is in this front area. We've received a considerable number of complaints from patrons about that. And so our intent is to move the teens to a dedicated enclosed space back in the rear of the library. That will free to, free up these two, the front areas to return to their previous purposes, reading areas. We're converting one office to study room. We're adding three toilets, as I mentioned, up here. And we're adding a climate-controlled storage area for the local history, for the west, pardon me, the center for Westboro History, I believe it is. I'm not getting the name right. This is a look at the teen area. Here, we're looking from the back of the library toward the front. These arched windows over here face out toward the Congregational Church. You can see it's a wall and glassed in between the teen area and the main room. So that should address a lot of the noise issue, issues that have caused complaints. This red structure here is a NOOK. It's a sound-isolated, small-group study area. We'll have, our intent is to have one in the, and they're portable. You can move them around. One in the teen area, probably two in the adult area. So we're increasing our flexibility in terms of being able to have small groups and study areas and so on. This is the concept for the quiet reading room. This is on the right as you enter the library, as the fireplace. And we'll be restoring it back to its original use, only with better furniture. In the lower floor, this whole, the whole public area will get new carpeting and new finishes. We're adding digital capabilities to the meeting room, and we're reworking the children's program room to make it sort of friendlier and also more separate as needed from the, the rest of the children's library. I should also say the, the heating ventilation, the HVAC work we're going to do is, should decrease the humidity down here dramatically and decrease the musty smell, the mold problems, and things like that. Did that go? It didn't go. That didn't go either. There we go. Not doing much on the top floor. The only visible thing will be adding an IT closet here in this sort of back room that's not used for much of anything. You've all seen the, the photos of the tangles of wires and stuff. That's going away, or at least it's going into the IT closet. So the big question, how much will all this cost? So here's the summary. We've essentially completed the schematic design phase that the town voted for in March twenty twenty-three. Our cost then was three hundred and sixty thousand or so. We're going to come in somewhat under that budget. In twenty twenty-four, we're asking the town to fund the design development phase for one point six million approximately. During that, we'll come to fully detailed designs, develop construction documents. We'll do value engineering to take out costs where, wherever we can do that feasibly. And we'll send it out for bid. And our goal is to actually have bids back in time for the March twenty twenty-five town meeting so that when we ask for construction funding in twenty twenty-five, we'll be able to have a firm contracted number. Right now, we're estimating fourteen point two million. That is an estimate. It's, well, it's a fairly detailed estimate from a reputable cost estimation firm, but it's not the same as a contract. So construction will take about a year. So sometime in twenty twenty-six, the library will reopen. So our total project cost is about sixteen point two million. Again, that's an estimate. I should say that includes everything. That includes relocation, temporary library, furniture, the soft cost in addition to construction. It does not include interest costs for the borrowing, though. So finally, this is the details, or at least one level of detail for our funding request for this year's annual town meeting. We're looking for one point three million for architectural design and project management. Hundred and seventy thousand to prepare for utilities. That could be a utility back charge and furniture planning. And a hundred and twenty-five thousand to prepare for the temporary relocation. We want to be ready to go if the town gives us the okay, and that's what this will be for. So again, we're asking for one point six million in the March twenty twenty-four town meeting. So thank you and happy to address any questions.
Yeah, hey, thank you very much. And, and Ed and Bob Petroselli presented to the Advisory Finance Committee last Thursday, and they voted on the project, and eight present, it was eight to zero in favor. Thank you, and, and I think, you know, we have more details in our packet.
A lot more details.
Yes, thank you very much for that. And I think that the sixteen number, you know, Ed talked about the, the ADA improvements to the front of the building and whether or not those will actually happen. Those are included in that cost, so there are some items potentially, you know, that could come off that next year's number. Of course, we look at relocation. At this point, really not sure. You know, we have to plan for that, but there, there's a potentially open space around town that, that could help us support that. So there, certainly for next year's quote, there, there are still questions out there. But, you know, I want to thank, yeah, I'm a member of the committee, so I guess if I say I want to thank the committee, I'm thanking myself. You know, I think it's, yes. But I, I think they've really taken, we, we have really taken everything into heart and, and what folks have said to us. You know, you saw in the diagrams that the adult reading room is, is back in the front. And, and the critical component there is that there is, you know, separate space for, you know, givens and high school students within the library that really isn't there currently. So just a lot of good things as part of that. But, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting people's thoughts on the proposal for this town meeting, but also the plan as it is currently constituted. Thank you. Can we add questions?
Sure, I'll, I'll go first. So first of all, thank you very much for all the work done on this. I'm very supportive of this because I think that the committee has met the spirit of, I think, what we heard at the two town meetings and the previous votes to come back with a reasonable plan. So I am supportive of this. I'm, I'm glad to see it. I, I think at the time during the town meetings, this again falls within, I think, what the number of people were thinking it would cost for, for this type of work. I have two questions for you. One is you mentioned the restoration of the windows. And understanding that we would also provide some more sustainable technology in regards to the heating of the, of the building. Am I correct in thinking that the current windows are probably single-pane windows? If you're not replacing them, how can we ensure that those are not going to be a leak source and eliminate perhaps the gains we would gain on a, on a sustainable heating system?
The, the plan for those windows is to take them out, restore them, as you said, by rebuilding essentially the, the wood around the glass.
Yeah.
And then add a storm window on the back. So it'll, there'll still be a single-pane window, but with the storm window, we'll have, um, I'm not, you know, it's not full sustainability, triple-pane, argon felt, but it will be better.
Better than what is.
Yes.
Terrific. And then if you can just go back one slide. So the prep for temporary relocation, can you talk about like, what, I, I guess I'm not clear. What, what are the types of work that's going to be done in that? Is that truck drivers coming in? Is that staff? Is that, what is that, that's happening for that?
Part of it is going to be working with our OPM and architect to find a new space. Another part of it is going to be, if necessary, getting fixtures for the library. We'll need, for instance, bookshelves and desks. We may or may not be able to take them out of the existing library. It's, you know, that always sounds good, but it often doesn't work. So we're not going to lease a space, of course, unless we're going to need it. But once it says go, we'll, we'll have, we want to have the contracts lined up, be able to sign the lease, and then start the process of getting out there. So this is, we, we don't have a, you know, there's no specific list of tasks there, but we want, it's going to cost something to make that move, and we want to be ready for it.
Thank you.
Just a couple. Could you go back to the slide that, where's the lower level? Just the, the bathrooms toward the front, are those considered staff bathrooms?
Those are staff bathrooms. That's not publicly accessible.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then, what was my other question? Come back around.
Anybody else? No?
Oh, God.
Shelby, Shelby could use a minute.
I'll ask a question. I'll ask, I'll give you, I'll stall for you, Shelby.
I guess my, my question just was with the relocation planning, just to confirm that. Assessment of the viability of the first floor of the community center? Is it temporary library location?
We would, we, I think we would love to get that location, but the, as I understand it, the community center is far enough up in the air that we can't count on it. And when we have to, when we're not sure what we're going to do, we're asking for, we're asking for the more expensive.
I understand that, and I realize there's a, it's a timing issue. It's how much space you need. It's a timing issue with other plans we have for the facility.
It may be a great interim use.
Yeah.
But that one twenty-five could go away.
It doesn't sound like the timing would line up.
Okay.
It's also potential that the senior center may be available.
I would think the senior center would be more, would line up better in terms of timing.
Well.
I think we got, yeah.
Okay. I think you're hearing interest from the board of, we, we have some space.
Municipal space that we can utilize.
If, if the space is there and available, we are, it would, it would save a considerable chunk of rent.
Sure.
Yes.
No, no.
Absolutely.
Convenient for everybody. But it may not be there. We, we know that.
I remember my question. Ed, you mentioned, and I'm looking at, if you could go to the schedule slide that you were on. I think it's, yeah.
This one?
So you mentioned about seeking, potentially seeking a waiver from the Access Board regarding the front entrance. Is that, where is that in the timing of this? Is that kind of that next step once you get into design development?
Yeah, that is, that is, by the end of design development, we'll either have that waiver or not. And we'll know.
Okay. Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
No, thank you. And sorry if that came off wrong. It'd be the pot calling the kettle if I gave you a hard time about that.
I, I do want to thank the committee. I know I, I can't imagine how many hours you all have put in. So thank you very much for your commitment to this project. So thank you very much for your commitment to this project, and, and I'm very supportive of it.
I, I just have to say that coming from a selectman, not being able to imagine, I don't believe it.
Well, and you've hit some bumps along the way. So the resilience of the community and the spirit that you're going forward with, I, I, I appreciate it, and I know many do, so thank you.
Now, I just wanted to, I, no questions, but I just want to echo that in looking at, you know, preliminary designs or what you're thinking. I, I do feel like you heard what the community said and you've acted on it. It's not the cheapest, but that's, you're doing what you believe is right. It's still at a number. We keep our fingers crossed what those numbers do come out with when we, we do this. But I'm supportive of this, I'm supportive of moving forward, and I think it really is tackling what, at least personally, it sounds like many of us heard from the community. So thank you, and again, fully supportive of it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we move on to our next article, which is the warrant article discussion. And we did invite town council to join us remotely tonight to sort of talk about the addition or subtraction of, I guess.
Oops, we have one more, though?
Oh, sorry, sorry, golf club. One second, we're, I, are, are folks okay? If we quickly sneak in town council who's online or?
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're, we're still going to go through it.
Make sure we weren't missing it. Yeah, no, that's fine. Yep. Sorry to throw you off.
No, 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 you're right. I, no, you're right, I had moved on to the next one, so.
That's okay.
But I, I, I think there's folks who are interested in maybe what town council has to, I mean.
Yep.
There are also folks who are interested in the golf building schematic design. I do not mean to, but I think we've had him online available for a minute. So we'll just quickly, hopefully quickly speak with town council about these issues.
That's fine with me, Mr. Chair.
Make it big.
Bigger. The thumbnail.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Much appreciated. I think there have been questions about this town warrant, and I think, you know, we're looking to close the town warrant this evening. So we wanted to try and have an opportunity to address some of those questions. And you've been a tremendous source of counsel on this. And so with that, I will hand it over.
Very well. Good evening, everyone. You know, various people in my office have reviewed the warrant and the various articles that have come along. But I know the, the one that's, the ones that have been.
So we're going to try and.
Oh, sure.
Crank you up just a little bit.
Okay.
Now, I don't know, Westford TV. Yeah, I don't know if you want to try and turn up your volume maybe slightly?
That's okay, we'll, we'll work with it.
It's okay.
Okay, is that any better?
As good as it's going to be.
Maybe, yeah, it's fine. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to speak up. The ones that I've mostly been looking at, or had and had, you know, back and forth with Christie and with the moderator, have been the ones from about, I think about Article 33 on, which are the petitioned articles. They obviously cover a broad range of things, and, and I understand some of the questions and, and concerns that at least have been provided to me that, you know, town meeting, town meeting is the town's legislative body. So obviously their primary tasks are things like voting the budget, you know, voting on bylaws, maybe accepting local acceptance statutes and that kind of thing. Whereas a number of these, a number of these petitioned articles are more sort of, I don't know, I'll call them social commentary, I guess. But the, the advice that I have given so far in my back and forth with the town manager and with the moderator is that, you know, for, for two reasons, I really think to go on in the form that they were submitted. So.
Now we can't hear you. Hold on. It's when we're getting to the good part.
I, I don't know if I have a way of putting that on my end.
Still can't hear you, David, just give us this.
Try again.
Try again.
Uh, okay, is that any better?
Nope.
I could, I could try to log in again?
We have commercials, we can run them right now.
You want to take Al? While we're trying to figure this out. Oh, wait, hang on.
All right. I don't know if there's anything I can do on my end. I, I could try logging off and coming in again. Maybe you could take care of the, the golf course? See if that does anything?
Yeah, we'll try that.
Okay, I'll, I'll log off and, and try it again.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, yep.
I'm gonna try logging out and coming back in. And he said, go ahead and take the golf course.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Pivoting.
Yes. So we do have the golf building schematic design through our municipal building committee, and you've, thank you very much for attending.
Good evening. Okay, I'm Al Gordon, everybody. You all know me, but I'm chairman of the municipal building committee. We met with Christie back on February 15th, the town manager. And she asked us to possibly oversee the work that potentially is going to be done at the country club. So what we did, we, we brought Peter Collins in. Peter works for a company formerly known as Erie. He was the project manager for the fire station, this building, and the town hall. So he came in on his own time, no cost to the town. Just ran over potentially what cost could be. We told him basically we were looking at initially just to do a feasibility study of meeting with the potential users up there at the country club and also potential for a restaurant again. And bringing that for an architect to do the feasibility study and to bring it to schematic design. His estimate is approximately $100,000 to hire an architect to come in and do that kind of work for us. So basically, we've, we've asked Christie to put an article in the town meeting for that amount of money so that we can put this forward, so that we can look and see if, what exactly we want to do up there and what the town wants to be done up there.
Yeah, I, I would just add that there was discussion about going for sort of the full schematic design and hiring an OPM. And I think the committee's interest was to, to take a little bit more incremental approach and look at the feasibility, while at the same time understanding funding sources. You know, as we know, as you all attested, related to the community center purchase, we, it had to be a municipal use. And so when we're thinking about the country club and the potential for it to be a full commercial restaurant, that, you know, sort of creates a, a whole nother discussion about how we would fund that. And I, and I know that we want to be able to be creative about that. So I think the committee was really interested in the actual feasibility, like what size building could you actually put there? Just getting more details before we move forward. And I know Matt, who's our golf pro, has been through this process before, and I know he was supportive of that approach.
Can you explain the, what the process would be? So if this were to be supported at a town meeting, you go forward with the feasibility study and we get designs and schematics and kind of ideas, then what?
Well, I mean, at, at some point, well, obviously, we're going to have to get an architect to come in there to work us through the process. You know, I don't, I think it's too early to even look at a project manager, obviously, because we're not going to be that far into the process. So again, we'll get an architect that'll come in and meet with everybody, figure out exactly what, you know, what the needs are for the different groups. I mean, obviously, the country club, you know, they're concerned with their parking lot, make sure that they have enough room when they're operating. Also, if, if we're going to redo a restaurant up there, they're going to need a certain amount of space also. These are things that we're going to have to figure out. I mean, obviously, I mean, you've looked at it, and I've seen the study that was done up there, and, and the building's in really tough shape. So I, I personally don't think it's something that can be refurbished. I think, you know, we're probably going to have to look at something that's going to replace that building at some point. But again, you know, the architect is going to have to come up with a design, you know, decide exactly what size we need up there. And, you know, again, work with the town on what the town wants to put up there and what, you know, it may have something, looks similar. It could be totally different, I don't know. But again, it's going to, it's going to be a culmination of, you know, what they want and what the town wants, what the townspeople want up there.
So the, the feasibility study was defined by Peter Collins as exploring potential solutions to meet program requirements. So there's some bullets that he had provided to the committee, which I've just pulled up. So it's document the program needs and requirements, generate an initial space summary, document existing conditions, establish design parameters, develop and evaluate alternatives, recommend the most cost-effective, appropriate preferred solution, a review of options, and then selection of preferred options. So it's actually even before design.
Okay, so, and, and we've already been through a very public process to get us to this point. Would there be a public process after the completion of that work?
After the completion of the feasibility study?
Yes. And, and I guess I'm leaning towards suggesting the answer be yes, because we don't know what that feasibility study will yield. And while I don't want to think that we're starting over, and I certainly want to value the work of the, the reuse committee that already did their work, as well as the public input that, for all the, I forgot how many, many, many surveys that were submitted. I do think that, let's be honest, this is a hot topic and people are going to, I think it's going to be important that we get input and in light of that, the unique use of this building has, you know, we, we just talked about this, so.
So that's not the, what I think you're saying, I, I don't think was really the charge of the committee as I presented it. The reuse committee came back, you know, certainly did a public process in terms of the, the understanding of what the use would be. And then that was presented to the select board. Select board voted to move forward with that recommendation. So this is the next step to say, you know, what kind of restaurant fits here? And what, how much space do we actually need for the golf pro shop versus, so it's just more, more of a deeper dive. I expect that, I mean, it says recommends different solutions, so, you know, I expect that there would be discussion about that. But I, I don't know, I don't think it's starting over.
Yeah, no, no, I want to be, I don't think it's starting over, but I, I guess I'm looking at where we're going, and we just, you know, just had the library building committee before us. That process has been a very public process at different points where the community said, you know, got a kind of a sense of, hey, this is what we're thinking of doing, meaning the library building committee provided that, those visuals and those opportunities. And the public said, we like this, we don't like this, and obviously, we're here now. So I would expect this process to follow that same.
And I think that's the, the next phase.
Okay.
This is sort of looking at the users of the building, like, again, how big could the restaurant be?
I just wanted to be clear, yeah, okay.
This is saying if the building is 10,000 square feet, X percent needs to be for golf, X would need to be for restaurant or other function spaces.
Do we have the parking to support when we're proposing?
Parking, utilities.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We need to encroach.
I, I can anticipate, you know, if this goes through and the money's appropriated, we'll hire an architect, we'll give them a parameter. This is the timeframe we need this to be done in, and they will come to your board, and you will make the decision with what they would recommend. And then, you know, that's where we go from there.
Yep. And Christie, could you just send, because you, you've shared the information from Peter pretty quickly. Can you just send us those bullet points?
Yeah, I can.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry, I lost my train of thought, but it came back. I know that there's been some discussion in the community about sort of the pacing of this project. And so what, I would just want to share that, at least when Peter was advising us, and again, you know, he was just advising us, he hasn't been hired as OPM. He felt that, that, you know, if we were to get this funding, that this work could be done in time to go to the October town meeting for the next phase. So that's just in terms of timeline, you know, what we are anticipating.
And again, that's the timeframe we would give the architect to come back. Give us enough time to digest everything and then present it to you. You know, obviously, it have to be done well in advance of October.
Yeah, and I would just add, Shelby, I think you're right. I mean, it's through that process of, well, the public meetings, but public process to review and, and comment on it. But I think it's, from a pacing perspective, it feels like the right thing to do it and not put a whole lot of dollars there. This is, this is really the, still money, but it's a smaller amount to get us to the point where we can then say, hey, yeah, we're ready to go and let's spend the money on the full schematic design and construction.
Right, I mean, we've seen this with our school projects, we've seen it with the library project. So, I mean, no one ever likes to spend money on feasibility studies. I think it's like, oh, why do we have to do that? But it takes professionals to help kind of map and guide us. I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't make a strategic decision in a business without some sort of guidance on that.
And so my expectation is feasibility study is going to make some recommendations. At that point, we can have public input, we can pick one, and then that's what you would go and then start working on. Okay, now we need to hire someone to do the actual engineering architecture to get bid ready documents.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think the, another way to look at, yes, I agree with you. But I think another way to look at it, too, is that with the community center, we're sort of, that public engagement, the programming, the schematic design, that's all happening in the next however many months. This is just taking that process a little bit more protracted.
Excellent, support it.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. And I just want to say thank you to the municipal building committee. You, you really only, you stepped up to take on this project, and you've quickly turned around something for a town meeting to allow us to continue to move forward on this project and not lose any more time.
My pleasure, we're looking forward to working with you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
I just mentioned Chief Gordon also on the library building committee. Thank you, Chief. All right. Brian, thank you for your patience. Run another test here.
Any luck now?
Can we hear you?
No? Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything I can do on my end. I haven't had this happen before.
Getting messages that they can hear him on Westford TV, too.
Well, they can hear him on Westford TV?
Maybe we can turn our TV on?
Can we do closed captioning?
So I think we've confirmed it, it's us.
I think, I think we're just going to put the phone next to the microphone if that works. Because you, you can hear us, right?
I can hear you, yes. Okay. All right, bye. Yes.
I'm just going to put you on speakerphone, so just stay on the phone. I'm just going to put you on speakerphone, so just stay on the phone.
Okay, will do. Okay, how about now? That's better? Oh, good. All right, well, whatever works. So what I was saying is the, the articles that I've mostly been looking at and going back and forth with Christie's office, as well as with the moderator, are the ones from about Article 33 on, all submitted by petition. And those obviously cover a great deal of subject matters. I know I, I've heard some concerns from people that a lot of these don't seem to have anything to do with what town meeting's mission is, which, you know, of course, as the legislative body, the meeting is there to set the budget and adopt bylaws and, and that sort of thing. And a lot of these are sort of, you know, commentary on social or cultural issues. But I have been advising that they need to go on anyway, for a couple of reasons. One is statutory, Chapter 39, Section 10, which governs town meeting warrants, is very clear that the select board shall insert into the annual meeting all subjects which are petitioned by registered voters. And so that is pretty clear. And the other reason is that basically all of these, I think, except for the one that's looking for an appropriation for the festival, all the rest of them even state in them that they're looking for a non-binding or resolution vote. And as such, you know, I, I kind of hate to say it, but it almost doesn't matter what the subject matter is, if it's, if the petition is proper and it has the right number of signatures. As I mentioned to Christie earlier, the, I, I had one from another town years ago where the petition was to exempt the town from all firearms laws of the state. And obviously, that vote, no matter what it was, would have zero effect. You know, there would be illegal to declare yourself exempt. But what I said was not that you can't vote on it, but this is just a resolution. You know, you want to talk about it, you want to vote on it, go ahead. It really doesn't matter what the outcome is. And that's really the case with these as well. They all say they're non-binding. It's a kind of sense of the meeting that they're looking for. They're not trying to adopt a by, you know, propose a bylaw. They're not trying to spend money, except that one, one exception. And I would be concerned about trying to say, well, this just isn't appropriate for town meeting, we're not going to put it on. Because one, the statute says they shall be included, and two, you may get someone complaining that, you know, you're, you're making that decision based on the contents of, of the thing, and that triggers First Amendment and that sort of thing. So I understand the concern about all the time that this is likely to take with all these presentations. But at the moment, I think, I think they need to go on and let the, let the voters, you know, deal with them as they will. That the, the moderator may have some other ideas on, to try to, you know, streamline things a bit, but that's, that has been my opinion.
Nice question.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that, you know, for the context and, and your view of this. So Articles Number 41 on new affordable housing units and Article 42, oh, sorry, Article 41 only, my mistake, does not state it's non-binding.
That's the one that says resolution, which is similar as.
Oh, okay.
That's the.
I got it, okay, Christie, just.
Okay.
Answer my question.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I use those terms interchangeably. A resolution just means kind of a statement of the opinion of the voters, and non-binding just means the same thing.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So a resident brought to our attention an appellate court case that upheld the town of Winchester removing an article from not putting a citizen's petition on a warrant. Similarly, that, of course, may be curious, I did a Google search, found that the town of Maynard attempted to take, not put a citizen's petition on. And in the letter from the Attorney General saying, no, it has to be on, it actually reaffirmed, appeared to reaffirm a, a select board's ability to not place articles on the warrant if they have effectively no legal effect, right? But a very narrow definition of what that is. So when I looked, when I looked at all the citizen's petitions, while many of them are on social issues and beyond, not within the scope of what town meetings authorized to do, they are on issues that could be discussed and decided by other boards and committees of the town, whether it's the school committee, the Board of Health, things of that nature. But there are four articles that would be directly contrary to mass general law. And so my question would be if the Attorney General has said you don't need to place articles on the warrant that would have no legal effect, and I understand the discussion about First Amendment and sentiment of the community, you know, but their sentiment of the community on things that elected representatives and some appointed committees can actually discuss and deliberate and decide whether or not to act on, given the results of the vote. And then there are things that simply when our results from town meeting go to the Attorney General, the Attorney General is going to say, no, 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 there's, there's no board or committee that could discuss or make a decision on that. And so when I look at Articles 36, 37, 44, and 45, these, you're right, whether they pass or fail, it doesn't matter because they're contrary to mass general law. They'll, they'll be struck in the Attorney General's review. But they're also out of the, out of the purview of anything that any elected or appointed official in town could act on.
But they wouldn't be reviewed by the Attorney General, because they're not a bylaw. So.
Okay.
They, they're just a sense of the meeting, and I think that's.
Just a sense of the meeting. But I'm guessing since they have, since it meets, in my reading, it meets the definition of no legal effect. And it's not anything that any town board or commission could act on.
It's not what it says though, Alan. It says no legal force or effect.
Right.
So is there an effect of those in a, in a resolution?
A legal effect.
No, no, it says no legal force or effect. So if, if it's, there is an effect. If that was, if those were voted positively, then there would be a resolution by the, the, the town meeting in support of that.
But there's no effect, because there's no potential for any.
Is an effect.
Consideration.
An effect is a result, there is a result that occurs.
Okay, I guess. I'm, I don't see it that way, because there's no.
And I haven't read that case.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying you shouldn't put these on the warrant, but I'm just looking to, you know, you know, understand the nuance. I mean, I, I could look and say, you know, the other petition articles, they have no legal force or effect because they're beyond the scope of town meeting, but they do provide a sentiment of the community to boards and committees that could, if they choose to, act on that sentiment. Because it's within, it's within their purview.
That's what that effect could be, yes.
Purview. These four, there's not anything that any. 36, 37, 44, and 45. So. 36 is barring gender-affirming care for minors. That's not within the purview of any elected or appointed board or committee. Article 37 is.
Some future mandate?
You know, not, not complying with future mandates. That's not, you know, anything that any elected or appointed board or committee town could do or consider. 44 is an opt-in process for sex education, that's direct violation of mass general law. School committee, Board of Health, select board, planning board, conservation commission. No one can act on that in any way. And 45 is the establishment of the Town Baby Award, which also would fly against Massachusetts general law, because it's direct aid, it's discriminatory. So there's no effect that this could have. I mean, yes, there's an effect that says a town voted for this.
Exactly.
In opposition, but there's no affect that the town could take any action. And so I guess my question is, you know, two questions now. One, is this considered, you know, legal force or effect? Which I read legal force or legal effect. I understand how you read it differently, and your, your assumption on effect is broader than mine, in my reading of it. And secondly, if that was the case, is that a boundary that we could consider as far as collecting sentiment, things that the town, not necessarily town meeting, but the town as an entire entity could consider or approach versus things that are just in direct violation of mass general law that we couldn't?
Well, I can try to address those. One, the, 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 the last one there with the, the Town Baby. Yeah, my thought on that was that, you know, this makes it clear that it's seeking a non-binding vote to set up this program. If it also included a appropriation of public funds, I would have a problem with that, because it would be benefiting certain individuals, doesn't have any kind of, well, at least in my opinion, sign a kind of broader public interest. And I don't think, I, I'm very confident Department of Revenue would say that's not a proper use of public funds, you can't do it. But that, even though it proposes a program which would involve money, this is not actually looking for an appropriation. So I, I said it, it could go. And in terms of, you know, you're, you're right that some of these things are beyond, beyond the scope of town meeting and, and, and the town, really. But I, I have to keep going back to some of the ones I've seen over the years. You know, people have petitioned saying, you know, I want a resolution to, you know, bring American troops home from Iraq. You know, obviously, that doesn't have any effect, whether it gets the yes or gets the no. But, but we have always, you know, decided that if the, if the petition comes in, in the appropriate form, in the appropriate number of signatures, assuming it's nothing completely off the wall, you know, obscenities or something along those lines, that, that it should, that it should go on as seeking, you know, seeking what kind of vote they can get on, on these issues. You know, some of them obviously are closer to within town meeting. You know, don't scale back on the library project, scale back on the golf course building, that kind of thing. But they're all, they're all presented as non-binding resolutions. So, you know, my, my opinion has been they need to go on.
So I'd like to see personally none of these on, but I do think that they've, it appears that they've passed the test to be on the warrant. And I don't think, because of the reasons that you've already stated around them being non-binding or resolutions, it is not, it is not worth our risk of any sort of legal, you know, contesting it, you know. I am confident, very confident, that the voters will weigh in with strong views on this.
And I agree with that. I'm glad we had this discussion though, because.
Well, publicly, I'm glad we're having this discussion.
Publicly, we had people come to us with concerns and issues and research, and it's important.
No, no, I.
It's important to know the extent and depth at which we looked into all of those communications and followed up to determine.
I totally agree.
The course of action. So, you know, as I said early on, you know, my question was to air it to understand, not necessarily to actually move or act to remove or, or not place on the warrant, I guess. So that the community understands the nature of the process and, you know, the latitude of the process and the limitation of the process as well. Thank you. So I appreciate, I appreciate the input and the feedback. It's, it's been a rapid course. I don't think I get credit for this, should I ever go to law school though.
No, I mean, and I, I just, just add is, I think what we've done is the appropriate thing. There's been a lot of comments. We've gone to our council, requested them to answer those questions that we've had. I think you're much more in tune with legal than I am. I am not a legal person, I'm going to listen to our council. I think it's, I think, as we all said, I think they stay on, that's the mass general law. I think it's also good to educate that this is not a town rule here, this is a state rule. If it was a town one.
That's right.
Would have, could have more discussions potentially, but this, this is state law. And I think that it's been, they, to the point that, that they came in, they had proper signatures that was reviewed by the town clerk, and the process went through, and they're there. I think from a timing perspective, it's, it's disappointing, because I think it, it takes time and time, town meetings, that people are already concerned about how much time we take for things that are, are non-binding. But me, it's, it's, we need to move forward with them on there and deal with it.
That will make our conversation with our town moderator, who's coming up here on the agenda, all the more relevant.
Yes.
Any other thoughts? I, I would just have one sort of final thought. You know, I think, right now, town meeting has been our form of government for centuries. And we have, a couple percent of the population comes out to town meeting on an annual basis to decide the issues of the town. And the rest of the town is okay with that, because the decisions made generally represent the collected views of everybody in town. If town meeting becomes an event that represents Westboro poorly on a regular basis, I think this date becomes the date that was the beginning of the end for town meeting in Westboro, because people aren't going to put up with this every year. And we will have a different form of government at some point in the future. So I just want to say be careful what you ask for when you want to air all of your grievances at town meeting.
Yeah, and if I can just comment on that, Sean, I think you're spot on, and I think, you know, it's, town meeting provides an opportunity for every voting resident in town to come and be part of the legislature. And if we were to change town, form of town government, they're going to lose that ability. And this definitely jeopardizes that if it continues, because I think people will not put up with it, to your point.
But thank you very much for coming this evening and, and talking through this with us, much appreciated.
Certainly, no problem. So we are, you're all set with me?
I, have a good night, thank you.
Okay, glad we finally worked it out. All right, thank you, good night.
Yes, through multiple forms of technology, we managed to get that accomplished. Thank you, everybody. And with that, now we're on to the annual town meeting warrant and discussion of the placement of articles on the town.
I didn't know, are we going to hear from John?
He's after that.
Nope, nope, yep.
So you have all of these 46 articles on the, the town meeting warrant in front of you. There was an update today, so there's a couple articles that previously did not have sums of money that now do. So I'll point those out to you. One is Article Five, the legal expense budget is $125,000 for the remainder of fiscal '24. That's based on recent, recent bills and the number of months we have remaining in the fiscal year. Article 24 is a transfer, is a increase to the FY '24 Finance Department. So we're asking for $22,800, understanding that we actually, we've been paying for interim services. And so that's to the expense line to continue to pay for interim accounting services.
I'm sorry, what?
Wait, which one was that? Yeah.
Article Six.
Oh, I did two.
Fiscal '24.
Oh, fiscal.
Maybe I said 24, because you all think I did, so.
I think you said 24, but that's all right.
Sorry, number six.
All right, and I'm sorry, can you repeat the amount, please?
It's the $22,800. There's copies of this in the back.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the newest one you.
If anybody wants that, if that's easier.
I'm sorry, copies back there?
Okay, that's all right. Okay, that's all right.
Do you want to grab some copies? And then I just wanted to point out, um, Article 14, which is on page 12. That's the Historical Commission funding article. The Finance Committee voted to defeat that article. And so they had a discussion with the Chair of the Historical Commission, and he, they've, Historical Commission has reduced that funding amount from the 24,000 that was in previous versions to 5,000.
Have they re-voted on that amount?
The Finance Committee? I don't know.
And was that at their meeting last night? Do you know offhand?
The Finance Committee?
Yeah.
No, it would have been a week or more ago.
Oh, okay.
And then the Historical Commission updated their budget number.
Oh, okay, okay.
The Open Space and Recreation Plan, Article 15, is 32,500. The Municipal Decarbonization Study is still carrying a sum of money, so we'll specify that in the, um, motion. Um, and then that's also true for the Golf Club Building, um, article. They, they are meeting on Thursday to finalize that number. And I think that's
For 25 sidewalks? Is that still in here?
Yep, that's still in there. It's, um, updated with all of the addresses. That's the one that got sent out this afternoon for review, but this is the newest one.
Okay, okay, so there's, and there's no, there's no money around?
Oh, sorry. Do you want to grab one of those? Yeah. No, I don't know.
It's a real time thing, John.
It is, it's been a very So I don't think that there's anything else that's major changes. Article 31, which is the Wetlands Protection, previously was called the Non-Zoning. We took the words non-zoning out of the title.
Oh, good.
Um, I just, I do want to note that the Historical Commission did ask if their articles could be moved closer together. So I told them I would relay that to you all, um, but that typically we do articles with an appropriation first, and then we do bylaw changes later in the meeting. So I don't know if you want to go through them individually to, to vote to place them. Just kind of given the number of them, I don't know if you want to do it, Sean.
Got it. Yeah, it, does anybody have any questions on placement of articles?
Can I ask a question? I should have asked this with, um, when Brian was on the phone. So we have to vote to place these on the article, the, the warrant, right? I mean, the articles that are in the warrant. If, uh, if the board or a board member were to vote against placing articles on the warrant, let's just say article number 45, pick a random number. And the board were to vote in a majority to not place them, what does that mean?
They have to go on. So we actually asked that question.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, sorry. I feel like it's getting late, so, right, of course, they have to go on. I knew that. Yep, okay. Thank you.
You're talking about the final 14?
I, just any, well, no, it's, it's not relevant to any, it's specific
You could choose not to put other ones on.
The citizens' petition ones, though, go on anyway. So actually, there was a question for myself out loud and for the public. They go on regardless of how this board votes. Yep, thank you, sorry.
But we do have the right, I think, as you just said, anything that's non-
Non-petition.
Petition, we as the board can vote to not place it on the warrant. That's our role here. Personally, I, I have no issue with placing all of these on the warrant, but we do have the, the ability for the non-citizens' petition ones to remove any of them.
Right. So did, were we interested in moving anything that's currently, from where it's currently listed? The, the Historical Commission, are, are which numbers again?
Historical Commission is number 14.
And number 30.
Okay. Could potentially get them a little bit closer, but not, okay. I, I don't know, we, we typically don't.
I don't. I think my take would be just we keep them where they are. I mean, it's
I mean, I, I think the option would be to move it further, move 14 back further so it's closer, not move the bylaw change up if we were going to make that change.
Money article though, yeah.
Still probably looking at one before dinner and one after dinner, or, I mean
Yeah.
So, so leave the, the ordering in the, in the, the way it is. Are there any other questions regarding placement of anything on, on the warrant? And I, and I think, you know, you
Yeah, so I, I have no issue with, of the, um, articles, um, that were required to place in the warrant, being on the warrant.
I would make a motion to place Articles 1 through 46 on the annual town meeting warrant.
I guess my only question would be, so Articles 33 to 46 are required to be on the warrant. Because they are required, do we actually need to take a vote to put them on there?
No.
Yeah, so I would, I would ask Mr. Johnson to amend his motion to
1 to 32.
1 to 32.
I'll let someone else make the motion.
Okay.
I don't think it's appropriate, but that's fine.
Well, let's discuss that. Let's discuss that.
I think we're going to vote on the articles. That's our next thing, to vote to support or not. I think that's where we make it. Do, I mean, I, it's just, to me, it's our warrant. Yes, we have to place those on there, but we've never I'm not saying that we have to go unprecedented, but it sounds to me that this is our warrant. Yes, there's citizen petitions on it, but it's holistically the town's warrant.
I would agree with you, Ian. I think that, um, it's appropriate for these articles to be on the warrant as they are citizens' petitions. And our vote is really on whether or not we support that article, not whether or not that article should be on here. State law is clear. And, um, I, I, I understand it's a, it's a statement, right? It's a statement, they're going to end up on there anyway, but that statement can be made more effective through our votes.
Yeah, I, I think to both your points, the vote of support or not support is, is the statement, not, yep.
Okay, so motion stands? Do we have a
I'll second.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Five to zero.
I'll move to close the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Trying to move us along.
Thank you, yeah. Oh, no, well done. Seasoned veteran. Okay, so we've closed it. I think there are, in terms of votes of support on the articles, there are also presentations that have not been made to us. I don't know, for the articles that have not been presented, do we hold our vote?
So you're going to hear from the petitioners on March 4th? So, it's up to you. And then on March 12th, you can still, uh, you'll still have time, but you'll have to do it that night, uh, to record your vote in the AFC handbook. And so if there, if you want to sort of think of it in reverse, if there's articles that you're not quite ready to vote on, um, maybe those would require presentation at, on March 12th. I guess I would also say that the, the budget you might want to hold till March 12th because that will be after we've, um, found out our actual borrow number. And we'll present, um, final budgets for landfill, youth and family services, any other adjustments we need to make.
Do we just make them all that night then?
I think, that's what I'm kind of thinking towards, don't make, don't make this complicated.
So I do think that the couple that, that we're not going to know numbers on, so the golf club and those we, we would wait to town meeting anyways because to see, I mean, if it's, we talk about 100,000, it comes in at a million, I don't want to vote it for without knowing what the number is.
If you, if you could just let me know at some point if, if you want to hear a presentation on any of these, but for the March 12th, that would be helpful as well.
I guess one of the things I'd like to hear about, um, although we've heard about it at our Budget Summit, but I think it's worth it, worthwhile, as there might be some updates. I'd like to hear again from the School Committee on, on all the roofs. There's been a lot of public comment about all of those projects. So I'd like to see if there's any updates that they can share with us, any changes or modifications, um, that are under standard.
Just, can you clarify, when you say changes, you mean like cost or scope or?
Any new information? Any new information they might, because by the time, you know, the Budget Summit was in the end of January, we're going to have two months effectively between then and, and town meeting. It'd be nice to get an update to see if there's any
If there are no updates or changes, do you want them to come and say that or just send us a memo and come if there are changes?
There probably will be because I know they're, they're cracking bids on a couple of these articles prior to the March 12th meeting, so you probably will have some updates.
I think it makes sense.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Big ticket numbers too, so.
All right. So, um, so hold all votes until the meeting on the 12th.
I think the, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I think the only article that's on here that you haven't heard anything about is that sidewalk ease-in article. So I don't know if you want.
I, I think that just an update would be helpful.
Yeah.
Like what it is.
It's, it's pretty straightforward, it's
Yeah, no, I know. I mean
The businesses are willing to give the land, we want to take it.
Right.
Build the sidewalk in the path as part of the
Yeah, I think we talked about it, I mean, the, the language, it always gets squirrely because someone will bring up eminent domain at town meeting, but we know that, it's exactly what you said, these are things that have agreed, these are friendly.
So do you want them or no?
No.
Okay.
I don't.
But if someone does, that's fine.
No.
And then, um, I guess, maybe not new to this warrant, but the, um, Article 20, the acquisition of the Zero Bowman Street property, um, you did hear about that at the Budget Summit. Just noting that the, the numbers and the funding sources are all included in this article now, so.
Wasn't open, public forum tonight, same time as when we were meeting, so.
Okay, so school, school departments, school committee for next
All right. Thank you to everybody who came and presented to us, uh, this evening on your warrant articles. Thank you very much. With that, we move on to town meeting preparation and discussion with our town moderator.
Thank you for waiting.
It's all right. I'm sort of used to it. Let's see, I'll use this side and we'll hope you can all hear me on TV land or whatever. Anyway, my name is John Arnold, 251 West Main Street. I'm the town moderator, as most of you know. Here to mostly just talk about the preparation, the work that's gone into town meeting, and also to make some comments now that the warrant is closed. So, going to start off with the typical stuff and then we'll go into it and I'm going to repeat some stuff, but I will beg your forgiveness with some repetition for people who only hear this part of the meeting. So I want to remind everyone, as, as the warrant has just closed, uh, it's still new to us, but town meeting starts nine o'clock in the morning on Saturday, March 23rd. This, I think, is going to be the third year we're doing the, the nine o'clock start. I've started to make the preparations. So we're going to be doing setup on Friday afternoon after school closes. The doors at the high school will be unlocked shortly after eight o'clock for voters to come and check in. And I'm going to start promptly at nine o'clock or as soon as the last voter in line at nine o'clock gets checked in. The meeting, as usual, will be in the high school auditorium, but we will have an overflow room set up in one of the high school gymnasiums. I'm hoping for the large gym. Thankfully, we still don't have to do the COVID separation, so I am hoping that we will be able to fit everyone, uh, in the auditorium since we won't need, um, additional, uh, spacing or anything. Masks will be optional, and I believe we're all sort of getting comfortable with where we are post-COVID. So rather than having a masks-only section, I'm just going to tell people if they still feel that for their personal circumstance that they want to wear masks, find a seat where you feel comfortable, as comfortable as you can, um, and to, and to wear masks and nobody will mind. And, and that'll be fine. I have no idea, based on the wide variety of topics at the town meeting, how many people are going to show up. But, uh, again, the primary seating, and I hope all seating for voters is going to be in the auditorium. The gym will only be used for overflow seating, and I may have, um, visitors, uh, if the room gets crowded, have all, uh, visitors who have not been admitted to the meeting sit in the auditorium and watch by the TV and audio that will be set up there. So I'm going to be working on that. I'm going to make an extra note to myself to double-check the microphones that didn't work quite as well as we hoped back in October. So that isn't a problem. And, uh, I'm planning on continuing the working through lunch, but having a dinner break. I know that's stressful, um, but to try to get as much of the meeting done as we can during the daylight hours, um, and although I'm not, I, I have a little bit of reluctance to say whether we'll be able to complete the entire meeting, um, we put, we should plan, and I know requests have already been made, to make sure that the school would be available if we need to continue, uh, onto Monday or Tuesday or whenever the voters have. So the plan is to work through lunch. The school department has told me that their vendor, um, is going to be able to provide some lunch. If you, people would prefer to bring lunch, I, I would ask that, um, maybe you take a seat out in the overflow room and watch and only come in for votes just so you don't, A, make a mess that the custodial staff has to clear up, and B, so you don't make noise, um, in doing that. We can have discussions as we approach the meeting for when dinner break is. We usually try to break for dinner at a, in between articles, wherever we are, somewhere around five or 5:30. I know traditionally we used to take the two-hour break. I think the last two years we've done a 90-minute break and it's a little stressful, a little quick. But just so we get more done, I think that has worked. And, and I'll work with, with you or whoever wants to be alert to that and make the motion as we get there. I will let people know, I am actively working to try to get a commitment for babysitting because I know that's been important the past few years. The person who had, the, the person, the student who had actually helped me, uh, arrange that and committed to it, I believe has moved on to college, but I've been in touch with the high school, uh, trying to get in touch with the Honor Society or some group. And we'll also try to reach out to some adults to see if they can, uh, help do that. So, um, I will try to publicize that once I know more. And I'm hoping to do an infographic that can be distributed on the town's website and by email and whatever, uh, once, uh, once things get settled in. So if there are questions about that, we can talk about it. But again, I think, oh, the other thing is, I've been working with Debbie Ledoux. We do have, uh, electronic voting scheduled for Saturday only. As we know, it's cost prohibitive. Unfortunately, due to my own work and family schedule, I haven't been able to commit the research to find the cheap, to essentially suss out pros and cons of the cheaper alternative. And the preparations for this town meetings have used up the free time. But I'm committing to doing that after this, uh, town meeting, uh, now that I'm technically retired from my real job. So anyway, uh, now, I think what a lot of people are interested in. So I'm going to ask you to bear with me, I've got some notes I want to read here, uh, to talk about my thoughts about, as we said, preserving the best of town meeting.
John, before you get into that part, can we just talk about maybe the, a couple of logistic questions I had? So you mentioned microphones, um, and maybe you'll touch on this as you kind of think about kind of town, the part two, what you were going to talk about. But I'm wondering if, um, at times I felt like the standing microphones were sort of like a little bit of a competitive process, if you will, that you were, in addition to all the work you're doing up there as your, in your role, that you were having to manage. And I'm wondering if having four plus roving microphones, one on the left, one on the right, lower, and then respectively on the upper section, left and right, if it would be easier for you to kind of orchestrate that from a roving microphone perspective, like this one for the lady in the yellow and then this, you know, rather than people lining up and feeling like they're, so as, as a suggestion
Okay.
I don't really have an opinion, but I was just trying to think
Well, I'll, I'll certainly talk to the school AV staff that helps with that and also try to work with the scouts. Sometimes it's a limit of how many scouts we have or how many volunteers we have. I, I've tried the experiment, I'm going to continue to try doing it, of essentially saying it's not the order you get in line. I call people, I know some people say, oh, you're particularly avoiding me. But what I found, I think it was a couple years ago, when I tried to say, if you're interested and want to stand, just stand, and I'll choose someone, we actually got some new voices to speak, who I think were a little more reluctant than those of us who are very who I think were a little more reluctant than those of us who are very comfortable to just go get first in line, so. But I'll certainly take that idea in terms of trying to make it easier to know who wants to speak, staging people ahead of time who could speak, so there is less.
Sure.
Delay, and more, and, and a more of a round robin type of, of who gets to speak. I'll certainly, I'll see what I can do about that.
Okay, okay, just for consideration, and then, how many vote, how many handhelds are we planning on? What is, how many numbers do we plan on for the electronic handhelds?
Right now, Debbie has said that we're 600, but we've said that we're gonna decide closer to the date, maybe 800. I know Debbie and I had had some discussions, and at first, there wasn't much controversy. I was then worried about whether there was gonna be a big controversy about golf club building, or I wasn't exactly sure what the library was doing, and then the citizens petitions arrived. So I, I would certainly be interested if anyone has any sense from there, move the zoom to the right.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just, I couldn't recall what we typically.
Yeah, so we're, we'll have at least 600, and then if we get a sense that there's going to be a large turnout, 800, because that's about the number of people who typically could fit in the auditorium.
Okay.
There. And I, and I will do my usual asking the voters to do a rule of the meeting about how we will handle, if we have to do a count, and if we have an overflow room.
And then my final comment, just on logistics, and ultimately, this will be determined by a vote at town meeting. I know we talk about kind of recessing for dinner around 5:00, 5:30. If we're starting at nine and we're working through lunch, maybe to give us, I hate to give up two hours for dinner, but I agree with you, and the kind of, the 90 minutes is, is tight. Maybe we contemplate something kind of like four to six, and that way, we're not starting at seven, whatever time, so that people feel like they're still awake for a few more hours.
Right, yeah, no, I, I totally agree. Again, that, that's up to the voters, I mentioned 90 minutes, because that's what we've done. But while I'm running the meeting, I, I don't always have a sense of exactly what the grumbling is. If, if you or if someone else in, in the auditorium wants to make a suggestion for a specific time, I will certainly put that before the. I don't think, because you have to drop off your electronic vote device, you have to check back in, 90 minutes is like the least amount of time we can give to people, you know, unless they're like me, who stay there and eat their sandwich at the podium. You know, while I pace around and then go to the bathroom.
Right.
Yeah, so any, but yes, if, if two hours, or one hour and 45 minutes seems to be right, tell me what, if the voters let me know what they think is right, we'll, we'll see what the voters have to say.
Thank you, those are my only comments.
I just had a comment, a question for you, John. The highly effective stoplight, I think the one thing I, I think we learned, and we talked about, I think, previously, was that the speaker at the main podium can't see that, so I don't know if there was any ability to get a second stoplight, or to position that at another location.
I forgot to mention that, because it wasn't in anything that mattered other than to me, when I was sending out my email about setup details. Actually, I was completely unsuccessful in finding another remote control, small one, but a voter had a very, very good idea that I'm going to try, which is to get a mirror. I was gonna suggest that, but. Like essentially a tabletop beauty mirror, and put it on Mark Stockman's table, and try to angle it such that it's angled that you can see the.
I'm all for it, perfect, low cost and everything, low tech.
I suggest the Viking glasses that has the mirror on the side of it.
You have to wear these when you come up and speak.
So that's what we're gonna try to do, and hopefully it'll work, and hopefully we can train the people at the podium to just move around a little bit to see it, if it somehow gets jostled.
Right, right. And then my second question to you, and I apologize if you did already kind of mention this, but if, if we do spill over into Monday, the voting devices, they're not gonna be available.
No, it's not, but it's, we've already spent budget, and it's too expensive, we'll do it with.
Yep, okay, terrific, thank you.
All right, so, so there, so, there, as I said, there's gonna be a little repetition, but just because this is the, this is the flow of how I've gotten to where I think we are, and where I think I am, I'm gonna just ask you to pardon the fact that there's repetition, if people only see this part of the meeting, they'll hear, they will have heard a little bit about what you guys have been discussing. So anyway, as you know, there's lots of citizens petitions on this year's annual town meeting warrant. I've received numerous questions and comments about this, and I'm sure you've heard them too. So while we're having this public discussion of the annual town meeting, I want to take a little time to walk through the process and lead into my current thinking about how I'm planning to handle these articles at the March 23rd annual town meeting. First, people have asked how and why these articles, most of which are non-binding resolutions, end up on the warrant. I won't take the time to go into all the details, but I want voters to know that the laws regarding the warrant in Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, that's where the law is, and here the law seems clear, and as affirmed by town council tonight, it says that the select board, quote, "shall insert in the warrant for the annual meeting all subjects, the insertion of which shall be requested of them in written by ten or more registered voters of the town." So the use of shall insert, has been, we've been told, means that the select board doesn't really have any choice but to place them on the warrant. Although I'm not a trained historian, the approach in the law is likely related to the First Amendment, which reserves the rights of citizens to petition the government for redress of grievances. So through this lens, it makes sense that citizens can petition the select board to put subjects on the warrant, and at the town meeting, we are the legislature, acting as the government. However, it also should be noted that almost all of the citizens petitions are requests for a non-binding resolution, since they're related to actions for which the town meeting does not have the authority to act. For example, my understanding is that the town meeting cannot override federal or state law, and cannot compel the select board, school committee, library trustees, et cetera, to take any specific action. So any warrant article that's asking the town meeting to take an action for which it lacks the authority is treating as a non-binding sense of the voters. They could inform boards, committees, et cetera, about what the voters at the town meeting think about the topic, but cannot compel any action by those boards, committees, et cetera. Just as I've received multiple questions and comments about how and why these non-binding articles are on the warrant, I've received a number of questions and comments about how and why we are going to handle these articles at the town meeting. A common concern is about the resources, typically time and money, that may be required for the town meeting to address the large number of non-binding issues. This concern is understandable, since people are projecting their recent experiences of other articles related to controversial topics, taking 45 minutes to an hour or more for the meeting to deliberate and vote. For 13, for 13 articles, there's concern that handling them could add two or three additional evenings to the meeting. Based on these concerns, a number of voters have asked what the process will be, and what options voters have with regard to handling these articles. Before people even asked me about this, I'd already started to think about and research the options the voters have, and how I can help the meeting act in its deliberative role as a legislature, while recognizing the importance of the town meeting's effectiveness and efficiency. So how can I, and how should I, help the meeting balance the desires expressed by the petitioners with concerns expressed by other voters? As I've stated, the town meeting is the town's legislature and has limits on its authority. Also, a town meeting is a deliberative body, with a focus on discussing and voting on topics for which it does have authority. The town meeting is not the public square, and it is not the primary place for discussing issues that are beyond the town's meeting, town meeting's legislative business. The deeper and more thorough discussions on the topics found in non-binding resolutions are best left for the public square, and taken up by the board, committee, or commission that has the authority to act on the topic being discussed. Since the articles are on the warrant, the petitioners have a right to be heard on these non-binding articles, and as a deliberative body, there should be some deliberation of the articles at the town meeting. However, the town meeting may not require the same amount of deliberation on these articles as it does on topics where the town meeting does have the authority, passing budgets, appropriating funds, passing bylaws, et cetera. Therefore, on behalf of the voters who have asked about the options that are available to them for these articles, my current plan is to present the voters at the annual town meeting with the option of adopting a rule of the meeting to limit debate on any non-binding article that comes before the meeting. To ensure the fairness and adequate depth of deliberation discussion, I plan to propose the following, which can be adopted by a two-thirds vote. I plan to move that debate on any article whose subject is a non-binding action of the town meeting be limited to 15 minutes, and with the 15 minutes allocated, such that voters in favor of the main motion, and voters opposed to the main motion are each allocated seven and a half minutes of the total time. If the voters accept this motion with two-thirds vote, I will follow this rule for any and all articles related to non-binding actions in the following manner. Each of these seven and a half minute blocks may be used as either one three-and-a-half minute presentation by a group representing the proponent or opponent, respectively, followed by speeches with a maximum time of two minutes per speech by a proponent or opponent, or in the absence of presentation, no present, if, in the absence of a presentation, there'll be, there'll be maximum of two minutes per speech for a proponent or opponent. I would alternate between proponent and opponent speakers until the time is met, or when there are no more voters who wish to speak, whichever comes first. Again, this isn't a requirement to spend 15 minutes, that's a top, it's essentially a, a maximum amount which would be spent. If you, if voters defeat this motion, I'll follow the usual rules that we use during town meetings, which include the possibility of 10-minute presentations and deliberation until debate ends. So this is the current state of my thinking, to balance the desires of the petitioners and the voters who've approached me with their comments and questions about this year's town meeting. I'm offering this compromise, I'm, I'm sure that offering this compromise could frustrate both proponents and opponents of the non-binding articles. That's often the result of a compromise. However, I feel that one of the roles I have as moderator is, when possible, to help voters understand the options they have, and help us reach the decision that seems best for the town meeting, and our role as town legislature, legislators. Of course, I'll continue to listen to constructive suggestions and feedback up to and throughout the meeting in case the situation changes. But thanks for your time and attention, and I welcome questions and comments.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Any questions? Anybody?
I think it makes total sense.
Yeah, John, I appreciate you putting together the thought on this, and, and the work into not only the warrant, but also obviously thinking about how this could logistically play out. I, I've had a number of residents, as I'm sure many on the board and yourself have asked questions, and one of the questions that came up is, will you allow a motion to move the article immediately after, after the presentation? And the reason why is that would allow the legislative body to determine on each article whether or not they're willing to even have a debate or a discussion, thus avoiding potentially any conversation, and that would be a determination of the town meeting.
So I didn't catch the part, whether, asked whether I would, what, do what?
Whether, whether you will allow a motion to move immediately after the presentation of an article.
Our tradition and the typical rules of terminating debates say that debate should only be terminated after a reasonable amount of debate has been done. And so typically, our tradition, and the rules that we follow based on that tradition, is that we allow the proponent to make the main motion, and then we make, and we allow the proponent to give their reasons for the main motion. So, the reason I've suggested, what I've suggested is, I think it would be premature to say that the legislature, as a deliberative body, has deliberated, if as soon as the proponent has made a presentation regardless, really brief, about how, that, why they think it's a good idea, I think there should be some deliberation to hear from the opponents. So, for instance, this is why we don't, many people, not many, a few people have said, why don't we just put our, all the articles on a ballot and just put it on the town election? Well, the purpose of a legislature is to deliberate, it's to hear ideas, it's to hear back and forth, potentially to hear amendments, and then to do that. So my belief is that it would be out of order to essentially immediately move, terminate debate, having only heard one side of an issue. And I think the more effective thing is to have a limited debate, where people going into it know what the top limit is, and that way, there's no need for me to have to, to be accused of recognizing a person because I think they're going to terminate debate. I have to choose a person to speak.
Right.
The reason I've come up with the, with this selection, this idea for what I'm floating is my current idea, is that voters would know the most they'd have to listen to, there would be some deliberation, and by my implementation of going in favor or opposed, the 15 minutes wouldn't be filled up with all people opposed, or all people in favor, and if the people either in favor or opposed decide that nobody else from their side wants to speak, we could immediately go to a vote.
I, I, I didn't do the math yet in my head, but I'm imagining, based on the scenario, though, you're probably gonna, if every article went to the full max of discussion, you're still talking about probably close to four hours on those, on those articles.
Three to three and a half hours, yeah.
Yeah, so my other question that I, that people are asking me is, there's been a, a question around whether or not you would allow all of the articles to be lumped into one vote.
I, I think the sub, again, I've thought about that, I've heard that as well. The, I'm, I'm gonna broaden your question. Some people have said, could we, could we put them in and treat them, you know, like, like what in some towns is called a consent agenda, or like we have, we have our capital expenditures, A, B, C, D, and E, or whatever. First of all, for us to do that fairly, I would have to go through the process of saying, does anyone object, you know, I'd say, like we do with the budget, question it. My belief is, if we did that, everyone would be questioned, and we would have wasted 15 minutes going through that.
That's.
And again, our, our rich tradition on which we, are our rules, we do, we typically allow the proponent to make the motion. So I think it would go against the 45-plus years I've been to town meeting, to, for, in this instance, break the tradition and let a, an opponent make the initial motion.
Thank you. So, you and I had a conversation offline, but I want to ask the question in public, as people have asked it to me. Other people have asked, once, before the article's called, can they do a point of order and a motion to pass over? And can you talk about why you would or wouldn't entertain that?
It's gonna be very similar to what I just called, Patrick.
I know, I know that, but I just want.
We have a rich tradition.
I want it out on the record.
Yes, we have, and I'll say, 15 or 20 years ago, we had a lot more motions to pass over. Shortly, I'd say a few years before I became moderator, there was, there was a realization by the then-current moderator, that a motion to pass over, A, leads to confusion, you're essentially voting yes to say no, and so some people are confused. And also, passing over typically has a meaning of taking no action. So, the, the reality is, in the past 15 or 20 years, a motion to pass over, my recollection is, it's only been used when the situations change such that a proponent feels that the action is no, the action is no longer necessary because something else has happened. A bill has been paid that wasn't been made, it's a passing over means there's no action, because there is no action to be done. In this case, I think, so I think the putting them in a block would just lead to the town meeting being frustrated, because if we put them in a block, I would then say, it's gonna be questioned, and I would certainly expect the proponents to question everyone, so they could make the motion and make their case. And if I, and by allowing a motion to pass over, I think, I think that the compromise I've come up with of having a hard stop 15 minutes of debate on the, on the article, would, would achieve the same object without having to explain people each time, that if you vote to pass over, it's a vote to say, essentially saying no to the article and taking no action on it. So, again, these are my current thoughts.
I know it's parallel to the immediate motion.
It's inside baseball to a number of ways, how are these things different, but I've tried to, over the past three or four weeks, I've tried to think about ways that the entire process will be more efficient, even if it seems that we would do this for, for people. As I said, I understand the compromise is going to frustrate both sides, but I actually think the energy would be better spent in-between town meetings, finding out if there are ways to, to better handle things that are non-binding resolutions, either by deeper dives with our legis, with our legislative representatives, you know, about the, the number 10, if there are ways that things like this could be put on a town ballot, so the, so the deliberation could be done in the public square where it belongs. And I think it would be better if this problem were solved, so the proponents and opponents could voice their opinions if and when necessary, as Patrick said, without putting the entire legislative process at risk. But for now, I am trying to deal with the situation we have at hand, which is, we have 13 articles to deal with, and I'm trying to come up with a way to deal with them as fairly and effectively as possible, without breaking years and years and years of tradition and the rules that we've played by before. And I would just ask people on both sides to put your, you know, to, to put their, to have some empathy for the other side, to say, if you, if you felt so much that you wanted something discussed at town meeting, would you want to at least get a chance to shoot your shot? And if you heard something that, you know, and if you are a proponent, I hope that they can understand some of the frustration about the fact that having 13 of these and people taking time is equally frustrating. And so my goal, as always, is that if people can leave town meetings saying they had their chance, but it's not that they were silenced, and it's not that they didn't get a chance to, to get, and to get their views stated by, by someone who agrees with them, if not them themselves directly, we can walk away as a community that says we, we have empathy and respect for each other, and to essentially take the high road and do what we can, given the situation.
John, I'm certainly not as well-versed in Robert's rules as you are. John, I'm certainly not as well-versed in Robert's Rules as you are, but my understanding, I believe there is a motion that can be made to refer to conference or refer to committee, and is that a motion that would be entertained? There are several of these citizens' petitions, articles, which really, in all reality, should have gone into various different subcommittees to get review and vote on them before they came up to an article at town meeting. So if that is a motion that is legitimate, I'm just curious if that's something you could consider.
Well, I, mostly, not, not for you, but mostly so other people. We don't use Robert's Rules of Order, but we do use a, a town meeting time, which there is a motion to refer to committee. It essentially, uh-
And the reason why I say that, I mean, we use that in state legislature, we use it in the federal legislature, to refer to committee, so I'm just wondering if that's an option.
Yeah, I'm, it's, I, I will investigate it and refer to it. My, my quick reference, when I, when I thought about it and looking back in my copy, essentially, it, it, A, would, assuming that, it takes a majority vote, it, it's all gonna come down to efficiency and effectiveness. If the real goal of having the town meeting state its opinion is just to say, does the town agree with this or not, then the fast, the fastest way to do that, I think, is to have the fewest number of votes. That would be to have a main motion, talk, 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 have a vote. If there's a main motion, and then there's a motion to refer to committee not made by the proponent, we'd have to vote on, on that, and then if that failed, we'd have to vote on the other one. So, I will look into it, it's just, I, I've been trying to think about what are the least number of procedural steps we can take to let the town people deliberate and to vote.
Yeah, I, I, I will just say that, you know, I, I get the sense, I don't know, I haven't really talked to any of the other board members about their feelings, certainly, but I, I get the sense that the community definitely wants to have a effective, calm, peaceful town meeting, and the concern here is with some of these topics that there could be some issues, for lack of a better word, and, you know, again, some of these things really should have gone to committee before they were even proposed up. So I'm just looking to try to see if there's a way to not remove the ability and, and impede somebody's First Amendment rights, or certainly the ability of, as you said it earlier, our founding fathers, what the intentions were here, but to maintain the spirit of allowing these things to go through what is really the appropriate process for some of them.
So, I was just gonna say, we did, we had a petition, maybe a couple of town meetings ago, that did refer to committee, and that, the way that that process played out is that we, the, the motion, as I remember it, is that it referred specifically to the Board of Health. So then the Board of Health took it back, they had multiple meetings on it, and then they brought it back to, ultimately, it was a bylaw change that they brought back. So, so I think it would be, there's a, there's a whole process. Once, once you revert to committee, there is a whole process to go through with it.
And just the point would be, is that in that, in that process, the citizen's petition was to create a bylaw, the town meeting decided to refer to the Board of Health to make sure the bylaw made sense and had more vetting. What I've understood, from what I've heard, including from what our town council said tonight, we could refer these to committee, but there is nothing for them to report back to the town meeting for. So, typically, a refer to committee, they refer it to committee so it can get-
Well, it could be killed in committee if they, if it's so decided. But I mean, the point, the point is, there's absolutely, you know, the ability in that committee to move it forward, fit, clean it up, fix it, whatever is necessary, make a recommendation, bring it back to town meeting.
Yes.
And, and, and a non-binding, as we heard from council, non-binding in referendums is an actual action, right? We, we, as a board here, regularly sign letters of, you know, refer, to the governor, et cetera, so that's exactly what this is, it's the town stepping up and saying something.
All right, if anyone's interested, I mean, if you or anyone is interested in, just to make sure we have the motion ready, if anyone wants to prepare a motion to refer to committee, contact me, and I will help you write that, and then we'll put it through the voters and see what they say.
So, can I, can I just say, just in general, so I appreciate you asking the question, Patrick, sort of as a, I'm viewing it as, like, what are the options, and, and certainly preparing our town moderator for what could be out there, right?
Yeah, what could happen, yeah.
And, and I think we've all heard a lot of these. My feeling on what you just asked specifically about committee is, there, there is a process, and these citizens' petitions, binding or non-binding, you know, whatever, there is a process, and, and individuals chose not to go through that. So, I think that, I, I, I absolutely love the idea that you've come up with, I think 15 minutes is, is reasonable, and yet it's not overwhelming, although when you multiply it times however many, it's a lot, but, but that's okay, it is what it is. I think we allow debate to take place in the, that, and by you stating this, John, it allows folks that want to support or oppose to organize themselves in such a way that they maximize those seven and a half minutes. Ultimately, town meeting is gonna deal with a committee vote potentially, but I, I don't want to encourage any of these to waste any time in committee or otherwise, whether it's volunteer time or staff time, quite frankly. So I would, I, I would caution people against the, refer to committee strongly, because, because that just stops the whole process.
It, 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 it could be an immediate dead end through committee, or it could, or it could be expanded. I, I, I totally get it, I get, I'm-
Appreciate the question.
Right, I'm, these are questions I've gotten from the community, but I will also just say that the devil's advocate, the individual that brought this to my attention, was trying to avoid, for lack of a better word, the confrontation on town floor, which is a very public, all of these processes are very public, but this, that is the most public of all.
Yeah, and, and, and I guess I'll just respond, I know, Ellen, you, is, like, John, I'm, and it, it's probably not gonna be friendly, like, these have brought on a lot of emotions in people, and it's, there's a lot of really ugliness out there, but I have expectations that we will, when we come into that hall, we're gonna, we're gonna recognize the rules, and if you don't follow the rules, you're gonna get escorted out of that building. End of story, and that would be my expectation. These are the rules, you can bring your opinions, and you can feel very strongly about them, but if you're not one of those couple people for your two and a half, or seven minutes, or whatever it is, then, too bad.
Right.
Too bad, right? Because the rules, if we vote this for two-thirds majority, and we're not gonna have mayhem at this town meeting.
That's what I'm hoping.
And I know you, I'm not directing that, you know, I just, you know, I, I mean, this whole thing, quite frankly, has made a mockery of a process that I think many, many people respect, as much as it can be frustrating and they're long, and it, and it's, it's beyond disrespectful to the residents, our boards and committees, and in our town staff.
Uh, John, I just wanna say, if I hadn't said it already, I'm very supportive of your idea. I'm, I just wanna bring these questions that have come forward so that you can-
The refer to committee was the one I hadn't heard, so I'm glad you asked it, because I-
Well, it's a good question.
The other ones, the others I'd heard have been thought about, so thanks.
Ellen, did you have anything?
She vented for me.
Thank you.
I, I would, and I apologize, I don't think anybody's covered this, individuals are allowed to offer amendments to articles.
Yeah.
Like, let me give a, for example, and to see sort of what the lengths are that we could potentially go to amend an article. So I look at Article 35, for example, it's an, it's the end, it's the anti-racism initiatives. I, could a citizen stand up and say, I would like to offer the following amendment, to see if the town will vote on a non-binding petition to support Westboro Schools' anti-racism initiatives? Like, is that an amendment that could be offered on town meeting? It basically reverses the-
That's a good question, yeah, well, let me think about that. I mean, it really matters if it comes into scope or not, and, and what the scope rules are for non-binding things. I mean, since, well, since one is asking to end it, my initial thought is saying that if we're talking about ending it, then, then taking a no vote would essentially implicitly to support it, so maybe there's nothing wrong with explicitly saying to support it, but I'll certainly think about that.
Okay.
This is like spring training baseball, John, right? You're like, you get to field sort of some of the pitches and determine how-
Except the spring training lasts longer than the season itself.
I know you're gonna hit a homerun, though, so it's-
That's right, right, right.
You're earning the start.
That's a good one, yeah. I'm earning my zero-dollar start.
You're right.
Yes, aren't we all?
Yes.
Are there any other questions for John, it being this late hour?
But, you know, just as a clarification, the proponents would, article information is there for the voter's information, they're not, if they choose to read that as part of their presentation, that would be their presentation, but that's not an additional amount of time, correct?
No, we, we don't have the tradition of article information having been read.
Okay.
My assumption is, it's been ever since it's been in the Finance Committee booklet, which I was on the Finance Committee, was there, is it's assumed people read that while they're listening to the debate.
Yeah.
So if someone wants to read it, that's part of their time.
Yep, understood, thank you.
And, and I guess I, I mentioned the amendment thing earlier, because as, as a reminder to folks, amendments are voted on first.
Yes, they are.
So if there's an amendment made to one of these articles, that amendment would be voted on before the article itself.
Yes.
If, if the amendment was allowed-
Right, and my interpretation would be, so far, of all the possible amendments that I've thought about, an amendment would likely be, if, if somebody amends the, the main motion, I expect, which would be, I move that the town vote a non-binding resolution, and if somebody amended it such that it changed the tenor, the speaker in favor of the amendment, A, would be using up a proponent, an opponent time slot, and discussion in favor of that would use up an opponent's time. So I, the, the rule that I'm proposing says that the debate on any articles, that's the entire article, so that means the debate on the amendment would be included in that. My intention is the, the, the debate on the entire article with amendments, and so if someone makes an, like, if someone were to make that support-
Yeah.
I would count that as an opponent time slot-
Right.
Moving toward their seven and a half minutes. When, when nobody else wants to talk, or when we hit the 15 minutes, whichever comes first, we would then vote on the amendment, and then depending on whether the amendment passed or failed, we'd then vote on the main motion, either, on a motion either amended or not. And I know that's confusing, I'll explain it better than that at the-
I hope you have some supportive timekeepers.
I'm working on it.
Okay. For your own sake.
Any other?
Thank you.
John, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Again, this is my current state of the thinking, if things change, or if the situation changes, or if anybody has other ideas, let me know.
I think it's a good approach.
And thank you for all your efforts for the town.
Well, thank you for your efforts, too, thank you. And thanks for listening to me and letting me do my, some of my outreach at your meetings, since I don't have meetings of my own. Thanks.
Is valid, thank you.
Our town clerk is still here to watch you sign the warrants.
Oh, okay.
Debbie, the-
Were you the warrant signing, was it?
They're signing.
Okay, so we could probably do that while the town manager-
Gives her a report.
Gives her a report?
Yeah. Pay attention, yeah.
Can I end debate?
Huh? So the upcoming select board meetings are, we have one tomorrow morning, which is an executive session at 8:00 AM, Monday, March 4th, at 7:00 PM, for a joint meeting with the Advisory Finance Committee. Again, that joint meeting is to hear from all of the sponsors of the petition articles. We have two long-serving members of the DPW who are retiring, Paul Winchell for, after 37 years of service, and Sean McDowell for 39 years of service. The Senior Tax Work Program participants will be receiving their assignments from the Council on Aging and joining town employees in departments across Westboro. The Finance Department, the first excise tax bills were mailed on the 26th, are due March 27th. Reminder that exemption applications are due April 1st, and that business, personal property returns are due March 1st. In IT, the town received a cyber awareness grant from the Executive Office of Technology Services, I think this is the third year that we've received this grant. The award consists of seats in the 2024 Municipal Cybersecurity Awareness Training Program, which will promote overall cybersecurity posture through end-user training evaluation and threat simulation. The Recreation Department, the Spring and Summer Brochures is now available, and Gretel in the Recreation Department has translated the brochure into Spanish, so this is the first year it's available in another language. So thank you, Gretel. Then the Senior Center has been busy with different programs, they've received 73 applications for the Senior Veteran Property Tax Work Program, and have made 58 placements. Their caregiver support programs have been popular and continue to grow, and then the mini-bus transportation requests have increased, so that we anticipate the arrival of our third vehicle due by the end of March. And then the Town Clerk's Office has been very busy with the presidential primary on Tuesday, March 5th, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and the town election the following Tuesday, March 12th, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, both being held at the Westboro High School. There is early voting this week at Town Hall during normal business hours, and it ends at noon on Friday. There is no early voting in person for the town election. Vote-by-mail ballots continue to go out as postcards are received. If you have questions, call the Town Clerk's Office. Dog licensing is ongoing through March 31st, late fees begin April 1st, and then Youth and Family Services and the Westboro Library Children's Room held a game craft afternoon on February 22nd, over 40 community members attended. The Youth Commission is also looking for an adult voting member. Did she finish signing?
Yeah.
Steve, thank you very much. Oh, issues and correspondence of the Select Board.
Do we have minutes?
Uh, that, well, it's listed after.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
And I, I go in the floor.
All right, question. I'll go first, I have nothing today.
Oh, thank you, thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Um, just real quick, Voice Code Troop 100 Annual Pancake Breakfast is this coming Sunday, so I hope people can attend for that for their one fundraiser for the year. And then we heard earlier, we have Municipal Building Committee coming up on Thursday, we had one prior to this, so, back to work with that committee for municipal buildings, that's it.
Can I add something? We got some really exciting news on Monday, and John just reminded me, the, the, the bond rating has, they've affirmed our AAA bond rating, SV1+, which is really exciting. One of the things that they look at, certainly, is your financial administration, so, and given the turnover, I think it really speaks volumes about the, the financial responsibility of the town, so, pretty exciting.
Hold on.
Good job.
Thank you.
It's like, now I can go home.
Keep going.
Ian, sorry, did you, did you have any?
I'm done, nope.
Just a brief update, we're waiting for confirmation, but we believe the Affordable Housing Sale at Seven Lawton's Way closed today. The household, the home, the family buying the property were previously renting in Westboro. And so-
I think, same for me. Thank you to everybody, and, oh, so we do have one set of minutes to approve?
I moved the approval of the meeting minutes of February 6, 2024.
Second? In favor, five to zero, and can I get a motion?
I moved to enter under executive session, under Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, our United States Bankruptcy Court, Southern District of New York versus Indo International Case Number 22-22549JLG. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position, and under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 67 Milk Street, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position, and under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive session minutes of February 6, 2024.
All right, I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating, litigating, and bargaining position. The board will not be reconvening an open session after executive session. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much, roll call vote?
Johnson, yes.
Benenberg, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Welch, yes.
And Kio, yes. Thank you, Westboro TV, good night, everyone.